Okay, so with that, we definitely have our quorum. So with that, we will have a roll call, please.
Yes, and remember to respond by saying where you are located in a city or township or whatever. Matt Kowalski.
Here attending remotely in the city of Dexter.
And we said that Tom Phelps will be absent this evening. Jim Carty.
Here and attending in the city of Dexter, Michigan.
Allison Healy.
Here attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
Chet Hill.
Here attending remotely from Anna Marie Island in Florida.
Is it a city?
Actually, it's Bradington, Bradington Beach.
Okay, okay, we'll use that. Kyle Marsh.
Present attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
Karen Roberts.
There attending remotely from my kitchen in the city of Dexter.
Wow, Louisa Hubbard.
Here attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
Dustin Wise.
Attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
And our student reps, Charlotte Holly.
Charlotte will not be here tonight.
Okay. And Eleanor King. I did not see her on the list.
She was supposed to be.
Here attending remotely from the city of Dexter.
Did you see the update I sent you? Sorry, Carol.
Me?
No. I was talking to Matt, sorry.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, um, all right, so next on the agenda, the action on the minutes from the regular meeting of March 1st. Can we have someone move the minutes, please?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Move Roberts, support Carty. Any changes, additions, corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. Wait, I'm sorry, Carol, I know we keep going through this, but we need a roll call on this as well, correct?
That's correct, this and the agenda, yes.
And the agenda, okay. All right, could we have a roll call, please, on the minutes?
Matt, before you go, it had looked like James McCarger had a hand up.
Yeah, but I don't know who that is, so.
Okay.
Yeah, he's got it down now, but thanks, Jim.
Yeah, thanks, Jim, and we were gonna have that, because I think in my, I was gonna, actually, it's good timing. I was gonna ask to make sure our planning commissioners remember to use, raise their hands and kind of call me out. There's a lot of people in the chat today and a lot of people on the screen. So it's a little harder for me to keep track of grouping everybody where people are, but so please try and get me attention or get my attention, thank you. Okay, so. Sorry, we're going ahead with the roll, with the roll call vote for the minutes.
Okay, Carty.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Healy.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wise.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Roberts.
Ross.
Kowalski.
Yes. Okay, minutes are approved. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Can we have someone move the agenda, please?
But with, but we, that we omit.
No, that's okay, Karen, disregard.
Okay.
We'll hold the public hearing today. We will hold it again next month.
Okay.
This way.
Clarifier, yeah, we'll have Michelle clarify our actions on that, so, sorry, I think, Chet Hill, you were going, I believe you said you would move the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. No problem, do we have support?
Second.
I think I said Dustin, stand up, so support wise, any changes, additions to the agenda? None, no hand raised, can we have a roll call vote on the agenda, please?
Yes, Hubbard.
Yes.
Wise.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Carty.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Healy.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes. Okay, the. Let's see, we got the agenda is approved, as posted, so next we have our public hearings. We are going to go ahead with our public hearings tonight. In speaking with Michelle, it's possible, I think we're going to have to renotice them, correct, Michelle?
We'll renotice them, you'll take no action tonight, but it will give the, it'll give staff the chance to hear your feedback on the final CIP, on the text amendment, and it will, sorry, it will provide the applicant input that he needs, both from planning commission and the public. Again, my apologies for the technical issues tonight.
It happens, so, so first on the agenda, we have the text amendment to the zoning ordinance, which is to allow self-storage within the I-1 district. And so with that, first, we will have the, a staff report presented, and then we will have, well, in this case, there's no applicant, it's the city promoting, pushing this forward. And then after that, we would have a, open up the discussion for the public hearing, and then a planning commission discussion after that. So with that, who is doing it? I see you're pointing, but I don't know who you're pointing to, Mike?
Yes.
It would be me, yeah.
Okay, that's who I thought, because he said, I'm right next to you on the screen, but he's next to me, so I figured you'd point it down. Okay, so with that, Mike, if you want to give us the information on the text amendment, please?
Sure, so the planning commission is scheduled to hold a public hearing to consider text amendments to the city of Dexter zoning ordinance that would establish self-storage facilities as a special land use in the I-1 district. The amendments would involve changes in Article 2, Article 5, Article 8, and Article 16.
Seventeen, sorry.
Seventeen. The, the Article 2 update includes a change in the definition. The Article 5 update would establish parking requirements for self-storage facilities. It would be a requirement for one space for every 100 stored units with a maximum of six spaces, I mean, excuse me, minimum, plus one additional space per employee during peak shift. The Article 8 amendments would include conditions recommended by the city's consultants. Those include a prohibition against the storage of any toxic corrosive flammable hazardous materials that all storage and accessory uses would need to be contained within a building, as opposed to an outbuilding or out force. And when adjacent to a residential district, the planning commission can place hours of limitation on the operation. Article 23.06 of the zoning ordinance establishes the criteria that the planning commission council used to consider text amendments, and pursuant to those criteria, the planning commission reviewed self-storage facilities according to Section 307 ordinance review. And found that they're a compatible use in the I-1 district. Self-storage facilities not currently being permitted in the I-1 district or in any other district. Staff and consultants have provided review, a review of self-storage facilities, their use in general, and recommended the previously described conditions. The attorney review is not applicable in this case, and as discussed at, during the Section 307 review, the planning commission found that self-storage facilities are compatible with the future land use plan for the I-1 zone properties. So, suggested motions are listed on page nine of your packet, and as Michelle mentioned, we'll take comment but postpone, or no, we'll hold the public hearing and postpone action on that.
Thank you, Mike, so we will have a chance to ask Mike some questions, but at this time, let's have, let's open the public hearing to see if anybody on the line would like to comment on this. This right now is the text amendment to the I-1 district to allow the self-storage facilities. So with that, we will open the public hearing. I have 7:19 on my phone, so open public hearing, anybody that's listening on the line, please hit star six to raise your hand. Oh, and we have a.
Star nine, please.
Star nine, sorry, star nine to, to comment on the item, please, and thank you. And with that, looks like we have one caller, one, go ahead, please, Mr. Northrup.
There we go, thank you. So you guys have done a lot of work on this, and I've.
Mr. Northrup?
Yes, hi, sir.
State your name and your address, please.
And I wrote that down, that I need to do that. My name is, my name is Rick Northrup, and I own property in the city, but it's not my current residence. So my address is 4230 Hawthorne Place in Ann Arbor, 48103, that's over in Lockalpine. My wife Dawn and I own property in the city on both Third Street and Hudson Street. And we are intending to build our primary residence on that, on one of those parcels this summer. Okay, so that, that's my interest in it, I hope that I'm still allowed to comment, I read that it was Dexter residents only, and I want to be respectful.
It's everyone.
Okay, thank you, and Michelle, stop talking, I know you've been fighting your, your cold. So you, I, I had some prepared comments, but I'm gonna abbreviate them, and I know I won't take up too much time. But I wanted to express my concerns regarding the proposed designation category in the zoning code and the proposed special use at the 7850 Second Street. And I'm a banker by trade with over 30 years of commercial lending experience. And I'm currently serve the shareholders of Bank Michigan as its president and CEO. And I financed a lot of self-storage facilities in southeast Michigan over the years, including in Washtenaw County, and I continue to do so today. And there's some aspects of it that I just wanted to call out, so that they're in the record and that the commission is mindful of. And first of all, self-storage facilities, I believe, are a unique business, and at their core, I believe they're a retail business that serves the public. And self-storage facilities operate at extended hours, and they generate vehicular and truck traffic, which you guys noted in your studies as well, and the facilities can also present nuisance and light pollution issues, I'm not sure that that would be the case with this, with this, since it's a reuse, and I get that those masters, the zoning allows for an adaptive reuse of it. My concern is that I'm not, I, I'm not in favor of a self-storage facility as the adaptive reuse for that property. And I have concerns that the business in that north side neighborhood is, is out of character for it, and it puts stress on its residential nature, specifically around the traffic. And I noted in the plan, in the study, we compared the industrial use versus a self-storage use. And I didn't see where we had looked at the current traffic counts, and as I've watched that property and so forth, I'm not sure that the traffic counts are as high. The vehicular traffic count is as high as what would be in the, in a proposed self-storage unit, and that concerns me. That neighborhood sees a decent amount of cut-through traffic from commuters, both morning and evening commuters seeking to avoid the Ann Arbor Street and the central, Ann Arbor Road and its central street intersection. And with my experience with my self-storage units that I've worked with, and was noted in the study, most of that traffic comes in the evenings and the weekends. And I think that further stresses the, the quiet residential nature of that neighborhood, so I have concerns about that. And, and, and those are really the, you know, the, the genesis of my comments. I also have some concern that the master plan didn't contemplate self-storage units, so now we're gonna shoehorn one into and it, through the adaptive reuse aspect of the zoning of the codes. And again, I just don't, I, I'm all for that, and I, and I know that building needs repairs, and I know we need to support the tax base, but I'm, I'm not happy that it would potentially be a self-storage business for the traffic reasons cited, and what that will do to the nature, or continue to stress the nature, the residential quiet nature of that north side neighborhood. And so those are my comments, and I, and as I said, you guys have done a ton of work, and, and I appreciate that. This is my first experience digging into the city planning details, and you guys have done a great job. I just, I just have a concern that, that might be the wrong business for the adaptive reuse of that building, and I, and I thank you for your time.
Thank, thank you very much. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to comment on the text amendment? Scrolling through my attendance list, I do not see any other hand, oh, I see a hand raised, yes, I see one that raised, actually, okay, it looks like Kissinger.
Yes, hi. I'm Karen Kissinger, I'm participating today from upstate New York, but I just bought property on Dover Street at 3558 Dover. So my, I have more of a question than a concern. I'm wondering about the lighting around the facility, if it is self-storage, and the times of day the lighting will be on. My backyard is sort of kitty corner to the property. And I'm concerned about the potential for light pollution and what that will do to the view out the backyard of my property.
Okay, thank you, we won't, we don't answer questions directly now, thank you, but we have, we've noted it, so that it should come up in planning commission discussion or if needed as a follow-up item with staff as well, so thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Next comment, I see another hand up, there we go, looks like Sprague first, and then McCarger.
Hi, I'm Lori Sprague, we live at 3530 Hudson, and I'm delighted, by the way, to find out that Rick is gonna be my new neighbor. But, and appreciate the, his thoughtful comments. I too have some concerns about the, the lighting that would be with that type of business. And would very much like to see it, you know, confined so that it's really only illuminating what needs illumination. And also, of course, the traffic, with that sort of business, I'm, I'm a, I'm a little surprised in this neighborhood to see that kind of business going in based on the, you know, emphasis that the city has put on walkability and, you know, pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods. Seems like this is a kind of business that by definition people are gonna be driving to, and maybe in a residential neighborhood, you would want to have something that was a little less vehicle-oriented. And yeah, that's already dealt with, so that's pretty much my comment, so thank you very much.
Thank, thank you very much. Okay, next we have, it looks like James McCarger, we have two, so James first, please? If you're on mute, if you're talking.
Just got it, sorry, I'm, my mouse capabilities are a little low. And i- if possible, please, Michelle, would you be willing to enable screen share?
I can enable it, is this for the special use or for the text amendment, Mr. McCarger?
Yes.
Which one, or are you doing?
Well, I, you know, I kind of, I, I think I'm gonna show the two pictures in the first one here, because.
Five minutes, so if you can.
I'm sorry, what was that?
So we do have a five-minute limit on the public participation, but if you can.
Yes, can it, yeah, has my clock already started?
Yeah, well, we'll give you a little bit, if you, if you can share it, we'll give you a minute, but.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm ready to roll, as, as soon as she says, I've, I've got to share screen.
As long as what you're sharing is more pertinent to the text amendment, if it's more pertinent to the special land use, then I'd ask you to wait until the special land use.
But don't only show the information once.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's up to you.
I'm gonna go with number one. I'm gonna go with number one. And I, I, I do want to note upfront that I, I think these two agenda items are kind of joined at the hip. We wouldn't be discussing number one if number two weren't out there. So I, let me just start off by saying, my name, Jim McCarger, 3580 Hudson Street. I, I, I look across the Knights, excuse me, across the Sprague's lot towards the one that Mr. Northrup was looking at, and I'm wondering if it might have one of my ex-students as a kid in that family. Anyway, I, I'm, I'm a 28-year resident. And I live 800 feet from the affected property at the corner of Hudson and Second Street. I want to say that, first of all, that I, I respect and acknowledge the Adair family roots in Dexter. I'm really, I was really sorry when John passed away a few years ago, he was kind of a landmark here. I believe Dennis has moved out of the city, I wish him and his family well. But again, I'm, I'm pretty close to the property in question. I, it is sad to say, but Adair is not coming back. And not just that, something like it, even under this, these revisions in the code, would never be built in Dexter today. That building would not be built in Dexter today, it violates the lot coverage by 240%. Its setback requirements in the application, which call for 50 feet on the front and the side, are nine feet in the front, nine feet, I believe. 13 feet on the north, not 50, 16 feet on the south, which is the Edison right away, not 50. To be replaced by what? Well, by a storage facility. And I, I'm gonna share on the screen, I, I have not been able to verify, but I had heard that the picture that I believe you're looking at on your screen right now is from Whitmore Lake. I think this is managed by the same company or person, I would love to find out the answer to that. But this is their most obvious sign, they're next to US 23, this is the gate to get in with its big chain and the barbed wire. Now, I know that this would never be built in Dexter, because we don't allow barbed wire, and we have our own signed stuff going on, which would prevent it. But nevertheless, it, I think it's important to say, okay, there's gone, to be replaced by what? And I really, really want the planning commission to take a step backwards. I know there are all the details about lighting, trash cans, fencing, et cetera, but I want you to take a step back and say, replaced by what? Something like, what's that in that picture? Um, I can't imagine that up the street from me. And what's more, I think the important thing here is that Adair was originally put in there, this industry, this zoning was put in to attract jobs. Adair, at its maximum, had, I believe, at least 25 employees. This new place will have max two. And the other facility has a code-operated automatic gate. So take a step back and say, what are we gonna replace it with, and how does it fit with the broader vision of Dexter? I believe that the zoning classification for limited industrial, otherwise known as light industrial, and also the research park designation that could, in the future, through the master plan, apply in this area, need to be really carefully examined, given what is happening in this town. There is a large-scale discrepancy between the idea of putting a self-storage facility across the street from all of those residences and the way that this town is evolving. So I, I recommend that you vote this amendment down, because we don't need it. We really don't need it. And I'm also gonna recommend that you vote down the second thing. That's now a minimum, park it, be thoughtful, table it. Listen to some more information about what's going on here. Have I exceeded my five minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Michelle will tell you that that's not unusual.
Yeah, sorry, we do need to cut you off.
All right, subtract the time from the next.
No, it's okay, thank you, we appreciate your input, it's very, very helpful, thank you. We have another, one more person following up right behind you, but thank you for your input, um, yes, Mrs. McCarger.
Wait to say, Mrs. McCarger. There, can you, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm Sherry McCarger, I am Jim's wife, so this is, I live at 30, 3580 Hudson Street, same address. I am urging that the planning commission deny this request for the special use. I did some research, and I looked at the zoning map, and I saw that there's only two small areas in Dexter that have the classification of light industrial. This is one, and then the other one is where the water waste treatment plant is, Alfa Metal Finishing. So these are, they're very small sections within the city that are designated light industrial. The special use request, therefore, is obviously for this site specifically, because it would not apply anywhere else, because there really is no other place to put in a self-storage unit. So basically, I'm thinking that to approve this special request opens the door for this self-storage facility to be located at this Adair site. It's giving permission by approving this special use request. I'm suggesting that there needs to be a lot more thoughtful discussion before opening that door to this company to build their self-storage facility, if that door is opened at all. At the very least, I'd ask that the planning commission allow more time for either public participation or just looking at what other options might be better for this site. It's a really important decision, because this will last for decades, we know it will be there a long time. And it's really important to the, this side of the city, all of these residences and all of these people that use this corridor to access all of the beauty within Dexter, all of the beautiful things that have been developed since I've lived here over these 28 years. So I would really hope that this request would either be denied or at least given a lot more time to consider what might be a better use for this site than a self-storage facility. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Okay, we continuing the public hearing, looks like we have one more, we have another hand up, looks like it's, is it Raider, James Raider?
Yes, that's correct, my name is James Raider, I'm at 7639 Second Street. And just to mirror some of the similar comments to our neighbors, I will say, we just moved here last summer, bought our house here in Dexter. That is a major corridor, especially, I would say, with the great job the city did recently with the Easter egg hunt, as well as the access to the B2B trail. I would be really disappointed to see a business similar to this in a spot where people are accessing the public park there on First Street as well as the B2B trail. I think it's really interesting in reviewing, preparing for this packet, to see all the investments the city are making in sidewalks on Second Street, as well as improving access to the parks and the benefits in the parks, that a similar business would be there that could jeopardize not only access to some of this, but also the immense traffic we already see on Second Street, as previously noticed with, with a lot of the cut-throughs, the additional storage vehicles that we would probably see accessing this site at different hours. And again, the light pollution considerations as we look down the hill on that facility and the implications of that in the evening. So I think there should be a lot of thoughtfulness there as well with the, the potential impacts with a lot of use we see through the Inverness, the Second Street, as well as the Hudson, the Second Street cut-through, as you guys review this application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I, I do see another hand up, and I, I just want to remind, although I know the two issues are very closely linked. However, this one is the public hearing just for the text amendment, now it does include the self-storage, of course, but it's not for the actual. So, so I mean, your, your comments are still relevant, obviously, but I think some of them are speaking more towards a special land use rather than the text amendment. So, but having said that, we have one more hand up, so if you would like to go for, forward and have your, have your comments, it looks like Stephanie, is it Minarath?
Minarath.
Minarath, okay, you may, go ahead, please, thank you.
You need to unmute yourself.
Technical difficulties. Technical difficulties.
It's on her end, isn't it, Mike?
I think so. I, I don't, I can only ask.
Well, if we can't get, we couldn't bring it back up for the next public hearing, but.
We also have another hand, a physical hand from Paul.
Yes, he just sent me a text.
I'm sorry, I did not. Thank you. Um, well. But let's go back down there, I guess, for a comment, and then we'll see if we can get the other issue figured back out. So, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Paul Kissinger, I'm actually a resident of Dexter Township. Um, I live in ninety-eight, uh, forty-one here on River Drive. Uh, I am actually brother-in-law of Karen Kissinger, and my brother have just bought the property. So I'm kinda joining in. I'm a landscape architect and a planning professional. And I just wanted to kinda echo, um, I will take my five minutes. I wanted to echo, uh, the comments previously that Rick had made with respect to the text amendment. And I understand that I reviewed the master plan, looked at the packet. And, um, it seems like the, the master plan did not contemplate storage units on purpose. I would assume, because it was not included. And so in the current zoning code, it has many storage units, which are now, you, the, the text amendment is to change that to storage units. But if it wasn't included in the master plan, I guess. Part of my question is, or something to be contemplated is, is this change being facilitated? Because there is an existing building that you would like to have reused? Or is it being facilitated because an applicant has come in and requested to do something like that? Which I understand cities like to have tax base and, and that certainly is important. Um, but, uh, I, I questioned the actual use as it was not into the, in the master plan. And really echo the comments from, from, uh, everybody else this evening with respect to the application. Which would be the next, the next item on the agenda. So, um, just wanted to throw that in and thank you very much for your time and allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we may have contact on the. On the next one. So I, I'm sorry, I forgot your name offhand, but we, it looks like Stephanie's iPhone.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Um, I just wanted to, um, speak, um, in, I just heard about this today. And I live, uh, my name is Stephanie Minarath. I live, um, in the Cottonwood condominiums, which are extremely close. Like on a general walk, we often, um, go through the Adair parking lot. So I'm very familiar with the area. And, um, as Adair moved out, I always thought something good is gonna move there. Because just a few years ago, um, we took a survey administered by the city. About how to improve the parkland that's there. There is right now a horseshoe park. And the thought was this could all be improved. Um, I feel that the McCargers, um, in that first speaker, um, along with the others as well. Um, have made some really important points about slowing down. I think the vision, this, this city is so lovely. And, um, and in the less than twenty years, but close to twenty years that I've lived here. It has changed so much, but the vision of whoever was thinking about how this was going to be. Um, has, it's remarkable. And, um, I think this would be a blight on my side of town. So, um, if you could step back and think more, I would appreciate it. And so I support the other speakers and thank you.
Thank, thank you. Okay, looking, um, I do not see any other hands raised. I'm missing something, so I do not see any other hands raised. So thank you all for your comments. Um, really, so at this time, then we'll close the public hearing at seven forty-four. So, at this time, um, we will have, uh, we have planning commission discussion. And we have, again, as was noted at the beginning of this, a request for a postponement due to, um, a mix-up in the, uh, noticing. So we will be, uh, requesting a postponement for this, would be for the May, for the May meeting. Yes, correct, for the May meeting. Um, but if we can have a motion to postpone it, and also some discussion, and, and again, at this time, let's keep it focused on the text amendment. And then our next public hearing will be more on the special land use and the plan for that. So if we can have a motion right now for the text amendment, please.
Matt, I'll move to postpone.
Thank you, Mr. Carty. Is there support? I see Roberts up first, then why, but what, so support Roberts, move Carty. Okay, so planning commission discussion on the text amendment.
So Matt, I'll just, I'll just go first and I'll say a few things. I think that it's important to at least try and differentiate so that there's a full understanding. Um, that what we're really discussing now is not about this specific project. It is about whether we want to allow this use within this zone, wherever it is in the city. Personally, I have questions about whether this use is appropriate. I'm inclined right now to vote against it. Um, but I do think it's important to say that. You know, these sites. As currently zoned in the master plan. Allow for many uses that would be much more intense for this site. Um, that would not require any approval. That essentially, if a company wanted to come in and do various light industrial. Um, businesses and tasks there, they could do that. And we would have no say in it. The neighbors would have no say in it. And on the whole, this is not an intensive use. I also have to say, as somebody who owns property on Second Street, I own a duplex there. It, it's not accurate to describe it as a residential neighborhood. Second Street is among our most mixed corridors right now. Um, particularly if you take it from the larger sense of. You know, we have the Dexter Mill there, we have the laundromat there, we have the car wash there. Um, we have an electrical substation essentially right next to that site. That is going to always make it a challenge for who wants to be there. It's likely not a site, for instance, that a developer, like many other large sites in our city, would come in and wanna put a large condo project there. Um. So I, I, I really push back against the idea that this should be described as a residential neighborhood. Um. I would say for me, this is a close call. I'm not locked into which way I'm gonna vote. I'm gonna listen to the public comment at the next meeting as well. Um. But it's a close call, because this is a use that is very close to light industrial and could very arguably be included in it. Um. And as I say, there are a lot of uses that are what we would term uses by right, right now, as it is zoned. Um, that likely would be considered even less compatible with the neighborhood as it is now, and would be much more intense. Um, whereas this use, if we were to allow it, we could regulate hours, we could regulate a variety of things. So, um, those are my comments, and I look forward to hearing everyone else's.
I was muted. Thank you, Jim. Other, uh, planning commissioner comments on the text amendment at this time? I see Karen Roberts. Yes.
Well, I'm, um. I appreciate Jim's comment that it is a light use. Um, I mean, it's clean, it'll probably be quiet and so on. But there are a couple of things that bother me. And one is traffic. That is a funny, funny place. There's just no, you know, if you turn one way, you're seeing one thing. If you turn the other, you're seeing something completely different. The fact that we've got, um, sidewalks in the capital improvement plan, I think is a bit of a plus here. Um, but I, I had hesitations about this particular zoning designation when we did it. Because I just felt that this is sort of too valuable a spot residentially. Potentially residentially or mixed use. Um, to, to lead to that, um, to have it be light industrial. And I, I was very, um, I'm very, uh, bothered by the traffic. I, I, it took me a while and I thought about it a lot, but the, you know, I'm not gonna try, I don't wanna overemphasize the last. The, you know, the application that we're looking at later, but the last iteration of that, there were studies that they did of traffic. Um, you know, projections, and they were terrible. They were just terrible. And the, I mean, I don't mean terrible, like they had on R square, goodness of its statistic. That was point nine on one, which is like saying Y is a function of what, Y yesterday, which gives you no information. Or they were down to like point five, which means flip a coin. That shouldn't be. That shouldn't be. And so I don't think they have, you know, I think it needs, we need to have very. Particularly, I mean, only, you know, only when it's adjoining residential. Because unlike, you know, shift work, there is, this is a somewhat unpredictable traffic pattern. And people who are on their way to their storage unit and on their way leaving are very task oriented. Their families across the street, kids, dogs, toddlers, you know. And even in shift, you get an idea, you get a, you know, a prediction. You go, I, I mean, I was living on Central Street. Now, it's better with, thank you virus, but it's been better with virus. But there were certain times I just knew you're not getting out of your driveway easily today. Maybe if you wanna go left, go right, because that's what you have to do to get out of your driveway. But it was certain very narrow windows and I, you know, I. This, um, sort of facility doesn't offer that predictability, I don't think. And what I don't understand is why don't we put it in R and D or RD? I just, it's perfect there. It's fine. It won't mess anybody up. It's not gonna, you know, it's fine there. I don't see any problem with it. I mean, I, I recognize that RD has a little more targeted. Um, intent, because it, it just does. But it seems to me that's just a great place for it. And, um, and that we really need to look at that corridor. Or that, yeah, corridors, um, and, and be sort of somewhat more mindful of the transition. Because it's a real, it's, it's a very harsh transition. And it's also abutting a neighborhood where there's a tremendous, I'm sorry, pressure on, um, on land. And I'll stop because the dog's not gonna stop, so I will. Okay, but that's my.
Okay, well, thanks, Karen. We'll get back. We're gonna touch on more of that with the second, um, you know, with a public, uh, with a, sorry, with the special land use for that one as well. So, um, again, so, uh, yes, Chet Hill.
Um, I don't have a particular objection to the text amendment. Because even though it wasn't included in the master plan, the storage facilities. There are areas of the city where you can, um, imagine that a storage facility would be just fine. Um, I do have questions in regards to this particular location. But in regards to the text amendment. Um. Including that or approving that, to me, um, is not, not that big an issue. It all relates to, right now, all of the discussion relates to this particular project, and I understand all it. But aside from that, um, I don't have any particular issue with it.
Hey, hey, thank you, Mr. Other, um, planning commissioner. Oh, yes, uh, Juan.
Thanks, just as a follow-up to what Chet just said. Just to be clear, this text amendment that we are considering is specific. To the area zone light industrial, correct?
Correct. This one is specific to the I, the I one.
Yeah, so then, with that in mind, I think. You know, what Karen said about it being okay in research and development. I mean, we just, we, I mean, and Sherry said, you know, there's only two small areas that are zoned this way. So it's hard to separate this text amendment from this project. Because, I mean, as everyone's been saying, so I just think that we have to be, if we're gonna start saying, yeah, it can go somewhere. We have to remember that that's not what we're looking at right now.
Thank you. I, I know Kyle, um, sorry, Juan, were you done? Kyle, and then, uh, Dustin. Yes, sir, Kyle. And I knew Kyle. There we go.
But now.
All right, you're good.
Thanks. Yeah, I'll keep my comments now to this text amendment, um, itself. And I was originally, you know, I was just interested and intrigued by bringing this use into the I one. Um. But the more you think about it, is it really, like, the I one has a specific. You know, there has been more thought, I think, put into that than we give it credit for now. And that there was maybe a reason that this was specifically excluded from this I one originally. I mean, it's different than a building that has workers in it with a parking lot, with some lights. I mean, traditionally, I know this specific building is a little different than that. Um, the building itself is more of like an I one building, but the use really doesn't fit that. And like Karen said, with the shift work. Um, and then a traditional storage facility is really a much different, you know, building typology. And site plan than a traditional R one or I one would be. So, you know, in general, I'm, I'm leaning against bringing this type of use group into the I one. Um, without, specifically without some more. I mean, you know, with the subcommittee, we're going through form and site plan requirements. And I think it would need a lot more thought than just, oh, yep, let's let them put this group into there. Because we really may be opening the door to, I don't know, who knows, right? But without some closer look, you, I don't think I can support it.
Great. Thank you, Kyle. Um, and Dustin, did you still have a comment?
Um, I guess wh- what it comes down to is, is whether or not we wanna have this as a use in, in the I one district. And, um, I do appreciate what everyone had to say. But personally, like, when you look at the actual usage that's gonna go on and the amount of, of, with a storage facility. I'm actually okay with this being in for this portion of the text amendment for the zoning ordinance. So it's just my view on it.
Thank you. Oh, Kyle, yes, your hand up again, or did you?
Yeah, and I would offer this. If there, if there is a, a cause to have this type of use in the I one. I, I'm open to that, but I think right now we're working on the zoning update. This, this big process, we're looking at these issues in depth, and we're gonna, you know, come up with our zoning update. To me, that's the appropriate venue for that, not just a text update at a meeting here. In which case, we can put a little more thought into it and look at it a little closer. So to me, that would, you know.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Kyle. Okay, so, um, oh, Juan, you have another comment?
I just wanna say I would agree, as somebody who's on that zoning subcommittee, I would agree with what Kyle just said. It seems like a more appropriate, um, venue to discuss something like this.
Good. Thank, thank you. Um, additional planner commission comments at this time. So we've got right now the motion, uh, again, it's of course to postpone, because, um, to ma- make sure we have adequate public notification. Um, so. Not seeing any other hands up, I guess, at this time. Um, I think a lot has already been said that kind of covers, covers it. Um, okay, so I guess if I see no other planning commission. Uh, no other comments, then at this time, uh, Carol, can we, uh, have a roll call vote to postpone?
Yeah, make sure you say when you're postponing it.
Oh, yeah, sorry. We will be postponing this to the, uh, eight, May.
May meeting.
With the May meeting. Now we can have a roll call, please.
Okay. Hill.
Yes.
Roberts.
Roberts. She, oh, you're muted.
Still muted.
There we go. Wait, you were actually muted.
Now you're there.
All right, yes.
Healy.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Barsh.
Yes.
Wise.
Yes.
Carty.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes. Okay, so that'll be postponed until the May meeting, the text amendment. Um, next on the, on the. Um, next on the, on the agenda is the public hearing for the special land use review for a self-storage facility. Located at seventy eight fifty Second Street. So with that, we do have a public hearing. We will have our staff report first, which will be given by either Megan, Michelle, Mike, one of the Ms.
Let's have the applicant, um, make his presentation.
Okay.
Then have consultant comments and then staff will wrap it up.
Sounds good. So with that, um, if the applicant wants to do a little presentation, do they have something to share on the screen or they just gonna? Or if you just want to introduce yourself, the applicant, give us a brief background and then, um, we'll have staff wrap it up.
Matt, it's Kate Bond from Midwestern Consulting. I'm here to represent the applicant. Michelle, can I share screen?
Yes, Mike will do that for you.
You should be able to now.
Can everybody see that?
No.
No.
Now.
Nope.
Okay, how about now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that, everybody.
Oh, that's okay, we got it.
Appreciate your patience. Okay, so, um. I, as I mentioned, my name is Kate Bond. I'm from Midwestern Consulting and I represent the applicant Derek Warren. Who's also on the, um, uh, meeting with us this evening, if you have any particular questions for him. Or if you would like to add anything. So I think we're all familiar with the location of the project. The property is here on Second Street. You can see in the aerial here. And we have, we started out, um, met with you all, I believe it was in February to discuss. The use of the project and started the process with making a determination of use. And brought up, um, the proposal of a self-storage facility back then. With, um, both the planning consultant and engineering consultant. Weighing in with, um, their review of the use and getting input from. Planning commissioners at that time with regard to the appropriateness of, um, the self-storage. Use within the I one district and we did receive some favorable comments with regard to that use. Within the I one district in this location. The, uh, planning consultant, um, of course, went a little bit more in depth into, into the proposed use. And similar, um, uses in surrounding communities, um, that were also located in, in. Similar zoning districts, so found that, um, the I one was a compatible. Location in terms of zoning for a proposed self-storage facility. So with that said, um, I'll get into the details a little bit more with regard to the project. We understand that, um, we will be coming back next month, uh, due to the staff who was a public hearing. Um, that's a little unfortunate, but I would like to take the opportunity to go over, uh, the details. Because I think there are some misconceptions with regard to the proposed project that I'd like to clear up. And then, of course, get, um, planning commission feedback on a couple of items that have come up during. The, uh, site plan review. Component that I think also require a little bit of, um, more explanation and detail. So we will be coming again, back again next month with more detailed site plans. Um, but we certainly would appreciate your feedback tonight. So with that said, um, here in a nutshell, my very crude rendering of, of the site. Is that the existing building is, is essentially remaining the same. It's the Adair. Printing facility, um, the building itself is not changing in terms of modifications to its structure. Um, it's not being added on to, it's not being demolished in any way. The existing, uh, area around the building is remaining the same. And, uh, the area where there is current parking and truck traffic to enter into the southeast corner. Where there are current truck wells, um, that area, uh, will still remain the same, although the users will change. That's the important part. Um, so you see here, uh, Second Street right here. This is it in a nutshell, and I'll talk in a little bit more detail about, um, what is being proposed to the site itself. And then what is changing on the interior of the building. So here is, uh, the plan, uh, the property itself. The blue represents the existing building, um, the existing building configuration. And yellow, uh, being the concrete areas that are existing. A little access here with a curb cut in the back along the public alley. The purple here representing existing gravel. And, um, then this yellow area representing an existing concrete pad that was used by. Truck traffic entering into the existing truck, um, bays that are located in the southeast corner, as I mentioned. So if I total all this up, um, I get a structure of approximately fifteen thousand four and fifty square feet. A site that is one point eight acres or seventy eight thousand four hundred and eight square feet. With a total lot coverage of sixty four point three percent. So I'm going to flip to the next slide. You're going to see some slight variations. But in general, you see the blue has not changed in terms of our proposal to the site. You see this yellow concrete has not changed. We have the gravel area that has not significantly changed and the concrete areas over here. We have proposed a ramp to access these truck overhead doors. But it lies right over the existing concrete pad that was already there. So these numbers actually stay the same. We do have, we are proposing some removal of concrete. Um, that offsets some proposed concrete parking spaces for barrier free accessibility. So basically, this stays the same, the lot coverage stays the same at sixty four point three percent. Over here is our site data table. I've, of, included the, um, in, in red, the important points here, lot coverage. And as I go through this presentation, I'm trying to follow, uh, both Michelle's, um, report to you. As well as, uh, Megan's and then OHM's report as well, and trying to stay in sync with that so you can follow along. So lot coverage here at sixty four point three percent proposed, which is the same as existing. And then for parking, we are going to propose, and this is a little bit different than my original submittal, but we're going to propose twenty three spaces. And the reason that we can do this is for self-storage, we understand with the text amendment that it's proposing. One per one hundred storage units or a minimum of six plus two. Per employee at the maximum peak shift, so that's a total of eight. And then for Maggie's existing, the existing, um, facility that's occupying the building right now. At just over, uh, ten thousand square feet of, um, of their current lease is. One per employee at the peak shift, which is fifteen, so a total of twenty three spaces that we will be proposing. Uh, additional landscaping, uh, came up in the comments. Carlisle Wartman's review stated that, uh, the, based on the proposed site improvements. That, um, additional landscaping would not necessarily be required. I do want to point out that there are existing trees in the front yard, three evergreens, a tree over here and a large shrub. So basically that's showing you some existing landscaping right here. And this gravel area in the front of the parking lot, I show this all as green here. Because we're proposing to remove the gravel and replace all this front area that used to be used as parking. As all grass area, so that will no longer be gravel and will all be grass in this area. The limitation on the hours that was discussed, um. The, I'd like to go back, um, to a few of the comments that came up and discuss the idea of. Of a storage facility. And self-storage has changed quite significantly over the years. We're all very familiar with self-storage that is the one-story series of attached garages. Basically with the overhead doors where you have the gates that automatically open with a, with a code. Um, as soon as you rent one of the facilities, you get a code that allows you to access it basically twenty four hours a day. And there's an office there with office staff. Um, certainly there are still those all over, um, all over southeastern Michigan. The proposal here is for self-storage that is all interior to the Adair building. There will be no, uh, self-storage overhead doors visible to the public or anybody driving by. A person renting an indoor storage unit will be. Given access to the building to be able to park their car in one of the designated parking spaces. Walk in through a man door and be able to walk inside to their storage facility. Unbeknownst to anybody or any neighbor outside, so everything they're doing is interior to the building. And can't be seen from the outside. So limitation on hours is in fact, uh, something that's a little bit different than the storage facilities. That you're used to seeing, uh, and in particular like the one that, um, Mr. Northrup. I think it was Mr. Northrup brought up in his picture. I actually know that was, I'm sorry, Mr. Car, Carter. He showed a picture of a facility and that's not what we're proposing here. So hours, uh, in this particular, um, proposal are that the office hours are typical. Maybe from nine to six or eight to five. At the storage areas inside the building are proposed to be accessible twenty four hours. To anybody who has access to the interior part of the building and therefore, um, uh, because it's all inside. Activity related to the storage is all indoor, so twenty four access to the interior storage units is desired. I'd like to, uh, also within, um, I'm going to jump back here a little bit. To this location, um, you can see in this original aerial photo, there are some semis located here. And the facility as it was originally used as a printing company. Um, and I can go back nearly twenty nine years in, in Google, um, Earth aerial photos. And find semi-truck traffic access to this facility. All surrounding this corner of the building and accessing the building. Um, so these semis even pictured here today is not what is proposed for this building, semi-truck traffic accessing a. A, uh, an industrial building is quite common and something that has been happening as long as this building has been there. What you may not be aware of at this point is that the, the building is vacant except for, um, just over ten thousand square feet of it. Which is currently occupied by Maggie's, which is a, um, uh, a small manufacturing company for, um, organic clothing. So they do have truck access and will continue to do so as long as their lease is active. But the idea that a industrial facility, um, has truck traffic and shift changes. And lighting to, um, illuminate a parking lot is not something that's going to continue happening. In a proposal like what the applicant is proposing. Because semi-trap, truck traffic is no longer necessary at this type of self-storage facility. We're talking about, uh, a, somebody like you or I who wants to take a van. And, um, bring some things to my storage facility or rent a, um, step truck from U-Haul or a pickup truck. And back it up to the southeast corner of the building, up the proposed ramp and stop there and unload. Into my interior storage unit. So that being said, um, the truck traffic is no longer going to be circulating through here as it once was. Lighting, um, for the facility is not going to change from what you currently see. Um, there is no proposed, uh, additional lighting. There's lighting at the doors, which is required. And it will not change. There's lighting at each of the overhead doors that will not change. So the lighting you see today is the lighting you'll continue to see unless the planning commission were to ask for something different. Um, so let me jump back ahead, uh, to some of the comments that came up in the, um, uh, reviewing, uh, comments. There were, um, uh, some questions that came up about Edison Street improvements. And conditions that may be imposed upon, um, the site plan or the approval. Uh, should, uh, Edison Street right away be improved? Edison Street is currently ninety nine feet wide. If improvements were to happen, I would think that they would include something like a reduction. To a more palatable sixty six foot wide right of way. Thereby removing all the items brought up in these reports from encroachment in the right of way. In addition, improvements to Edison Street right of way would include road pavement. Which would likely be approximately twenty four feet wide, thereby improving circulation. Three, uh, property owners there, which is the building and property that we're discussing now. The Edison substation across the street and the park, horseshoe park at the end. And defining the user areas. That's not what's happening right now, but if the right of way were to be improved. These are the type of things we could expect. Reducing the right of way, adding pavement at twenty four feet for a standard typical road. Would also bring the intersection into alignment for the prop for, um, that intersection at Second Street Edison. And the road across the street from Edison. Currently, it's not in alignment, so it causes some confusion. Should the right of way be improved? It would just improve that intersection. Right of way improvements should not be a burden or prohibitive on this applicant or any applicant looking to make improvements. Or propose something for the Adair facility. It would rather be the responsibility of the city to make the improvements within the right of way and therefore improve the situation. A couple of times, the, uh, review comments brought up an agreement with the city of Dexter regarding. The encroachments that are discussed. Um, those are parking spaces and a ramp. Um, the applicant's fully in agreement with that, um, uh, uh, an agreement with the city. And we understand that, uh, the attorney would draft that agreement, so that's something that we're looking forward to receiving. The comments, uh, also brought up, uh, loading spaces within the front yard. The, and whether or not we would need deviation, um, approval on behalf of the planning commission. I'd like to say at this point that we're not requesting any deviation in either the number of loading areas or in the size of loading area. We can accomplish the three loading areas required and the size required. In the, in the area, uh, located at the southeast corner of the building, right where the proposed ramp is. There would be two loading areas there and one loading area where Maggie's currently loads. Loads and unloads in their existing facility. So you see the three spaces right here. Uh, and then the waste receptacle, which we've identified on the plan and I've also outlined in this red dashed line. Um, the, the waste receptacles are in the same location as they always have been. But we would propose that they would be enclosed with something like this, a board on board enclosure with a gate in the front to hide them. Which has never occurred in the history of, um, the Adair facility. They've always been there, but have never been concealed. Um, I should mention that the loading spaces have also always been in the same location. In the southeast corner, so we're not doing again anything different than what has always been occurring. I'd like to talk about the ramp a little bit. It's, um, a little bit of confusion with regard to how to, um. How to address it. It is, uh, it is not part of the building. It is completely independent. Um, the manufacturer has indicated to us. That it is not physically attached to the building or to the existing grade. It is portable, it is modular. It is portable, it is modular. Um, it is uh easily relocated. Uh, there are some pictures of similar types of ramps at the bottom here. Yes, it is concrete, but it is smaller than the existing concrete pad that it will be resting on. Uh, the existing concrete pad is uh is just over sixteen hundred square feet and the proposed ramp is twelve hundred square feet. So we're not increasing the lot coverage. And the only way to access these above-grade overhead doors for truck access are to provide a ramp. It is the, there are no at-grade truck access anywhere in the building except for in the alley, and we understand that that's not able to be accessed from a pu- public alley. So I think having a variance uh being required to get a variance for the ramp, I would just like some input, uh, some additional input from the planning commission on how to address something that is not technically considered a building and it is not um, a uh increase uh in the building itself. So also being modular and not connected to anything, uh I would liken it more to the township's definition of a structure and um more like a sidewalk or stairs in its um in its necessity to access the building. Uh, that being said, um, the next variance that was brought up was the front yard loading space. As I mentioned previously, uh, the loading areas have always been in the southeast corner. We're not proposing new loading areas. We're not proposing relocating them in any other area. Uh, this is a difficult property to work with. It has four front yards, the alley, Second Street, Edison Street, and First Street. So to locate anything that is not in a front yard is difficult at best. But again, not proposing anything different that than what has always been there, and I show a picture back from uh an aerial photo in the corner down here with semis pictured in this southeast corner where we are proposing loading areas. In fact, we're eliminating loading area. Um, back in, I think this was nineteen ninety-two, this picture came from. So just trying to indicate that nothing's changed from the time this building uh arrived on site. Um, I, this is the interior of the building. Uh, there are two separate areas, a separate area per user. This is Maggie's. I've mentioned the existing occupant of the building at just over ten thousand square feet. And then inside, these indicate all the different storage units um of varying sizes and some areas back here, emergency access, restrooms, break room, that would be shared between Maggie's and the self-storage employees only, shared right here for employees only. The ramp down here, I'm showing Maggie's loading area, the ramp for access to the storage facility. A vehicle has the ability to back up the ramp, unload on the ramp and go into the building to the staging area and then take their items to their individual storage area. These gray areas all represent the hallways surrounding the storage areas and access throughout the area, the self-storage uh facility. There is no interior vehicle access. Vehicles only back up here in the loading area or into the parking lot area that's all along the front of the building along uh Edison Road. The existing conditions, it's been pointed out that there is outdoor storage in uh in the um what I'm gonna re- refer to as the rear of the building, but along First Street. The outdoor storage is the existing owner's and will be removed upon uh the sale of the facility. The gated area in that back area would be repaired and is proposed to remain. And the facade along Edison Street is proposed to be repaired and painted. Uh, additional items to note uh within the reports were that uh plans and elevations. We plan on revising them and resubmitting with proper information. Internus- internal circulation will be clarified, and again, I'd like to note that there is no vehicle access inside the building. And we have um received the fire department compact comments and uh they are noted and we will address them. And I, I think I made a point to address some of the comments that came up in the public hearing with regard to uh why there would be a decrease in traffic from um the an industrial use to a self-storage. It's a different type of use, so a different type of user uh and the lighting. Um, and I hope that satisfies some of those outstanding questions. So I, I really appreciate you allowing me the time to present all this information. I know it was a lot, but I felt it necessary to give that all to you for clarification. So I'm done.
Good. No, thank you. It's very helpful information. Um, so, and we may have additional comments for you um with planning commission discussion, um but at this time, I think then we will have our staff wrap it up. And would that be Michelle, Megan, Mike?
So we have the consultants.
Guys, could I, could I make just a few comments to add to to Kate's presentation?
You should introduce yourself so everybody knows.
Yes, uh, my name is Derek Warren. Um, I'm the applicant in this case. Um, I live in Ann Arbor and uh own another self-storage facility uh in Whitmore Lake called Green Trees Mini Storage. It's not the one that was uh shown by uh James earlier on. Um, I, I just wanted to say that this, this property, from my understanding, uh has been on the market for about ten years now and due to uh due to the various, the various issues with the site, um several proposed projects have, have been abandoned um for this particular address. So we're I, I believe this to be a fairly good use for this address. Um, I believe that the intensity is uh is gonna be lower by all accounts than than the previous uses or than a lot of other proposed uses could be. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention, uh, there are some environmental issues with the site that we've identified through a phase one and phase two environmental analysis. Uh, those were resulting uh a result of the previous uh uses of the site. And our plan or our intent is to mitigate those environmental concerns. So, thank you.
Hey, thank you very much, and we may have additional questions for you later as well. Thank you. Okay, so uh with that, I think we'll now jump over to Megan, please, if you could uh give us the consultant report.
Sure, thanks, Matt. Um, my name is Megan Mastin Minock. I'm with Carlo Wartman Associates. We're the planning consultant for the city. Um, I think we've gone over a lot about what the site is and i- and its location, so I'll, I won't go over that. I just want to note in terms of neighbor zoning and land use, um, to the north, it's I-1 zoned. Um, the land use is industrial. It's master plan for research development, but it's a little bit of an unusual site in I-1 in that it's not usually, I-1's all surrounded by I-1. Um, there is, um, as you've, as you've heard, single-family to the south. Um, master plan for multiple family and public to the east, it's park and open space, and to the west, it's single-family. Um, as noted, um, the site is um planned for research and development, but also had mentioned this area in Second Street in particular. I'm bringing this up because in the special land use, you need to bring the master plan. That's one of your guiding principles uh into making a decision that's site-specific for this use. Um, and so in this area, the research development designation is intended to allow continued operation of its current uses. So if it was Adair continuing, then that was the intent. And facilitate adaptive reuse of existing buildings for high-tech businesses. These new businesses should be less intensive than research uses and compatible with the adjacent neighborhood. So that's the quote from the master plan. Um, while the proposed use is not high-tech, it would be less intense than some of the research uses um that could be possible here and in as a reuse of the adapted, eh as an adaptive reuse of the building. Um, as it's been noted, this building's a non-conforming structure. Um, it has non-conforming front yard setbacks from Second and Edison Street and side yard setback and lot coverage. Um, the proposed ramp, um, in the site plan that we reviewed, it wasn't clear that it was a temporary structure and not necessarily hooked to the building. Um, I just want to note that in terms of interpreting wha- how that, whether that's part of the building or not, that's not the job of the planning commission. That would be the job of staff and then ZBA if there was an appeal or there needed to be an interpretation. So while the applicant asked you for some direction on that, I would say that that's not your bailiwick at this point in time, that that's something that either be handled by staff and then if it's then appealed to the ZBA. However, um, one of the things that we always look at is whether things are increasing the non-conformity. And so whether the, I, you know, how you interpret that ramp is whether it's part of the building. If it is part of the building, it increases the non-conformity of into the front yard on Edison Street. No matter what, whether you interpret it as a structure or as a a structure or as part of the building, that would increase the lot coverage. Because the lot coverage is all the buildings and structures and not necessarily the concrete pads and the sidewalks. So that's the way that your zoning ordinance in the City of Dexter is written. So I want you to keep that in mind. Um, that being said, the BZI can hear uh, um, the ZBA can hear a variance for these things, and that would need to be part of the application if it was going through. So we need an interpretation, a decision, and then um there would likely be a variance attached to this application as well as if, as it went forward. Um, as we talked about, the ramp and the parking spaces as proposed and the loading spaces would encroach into that Edison Street right-of-way. And as everyone has noted, that's typically been where their parking and loading has been historically. So this is a stru- unimproved street right-of-way that is functioned as kind of their rear and side yard the entire time. It's an unusual situation. Um, no matter what, an agreement would be need to, need to be made with the city to allow that proposed site arrangement. You, as the planning commission, could get some recommendations as to what that is, and you can impose some conditions as part of the special land use. However, ultimately, it would be um an agreement between the city, which would be likely signed by the city council and with the applicant. So keep that in mind too as you're making your decisions and giving the applicant feedback. Um, one of the things, again, as we noted, this is a really unusual site in that you've got the park to the rear um and how that part could be accessed or improved later. Um, it needs to be clear, and it also needs to be clear in any agreement um going forward in terms of it could be ten years from now when it would be, when it would be improved. Um, and if it's not in writing, it's very difficult to implement later. Um, just want you to keep that in mind. Um, in terms of traffic generation, as everyone's pointed out, this use is different than some of the industrial uses that could be coming in there um that were allowed as a principal use. So without um just, just they could move in, they wouldn't have to have a public cop hearing like this. Um, they may not even have, they would have to go through, uh, they might even just have to go through administrative site plan. However, um, as we noted in our um, in our applica- in, in our review, unless the factory had an evening or afternoon shift, the volumes might be different in terms of peaks. And that's something to keep in mind, and you can impose conditions in terms of hours of operation. And if you feel that is important, I would ask the planning commissioners to please share that tonight. Because I think that would be something that the applicant would then take into consideration as to how they go forward. Um, again, on parking and loading, I think, want to thank the applicant very much for providing the additional detail. Um, because we just didn't know how many peak um employees were at Maggie's, and so your plan seems to work, but we would need to review that on paper going forward. Also, that the three loading spaces, thank you for showing that tonight. Again, if this went forward, that would need to be on paper and we would need to see it. Um, and then also there would need to probably be truck radii to show that all three trucks could easily it, a truck could easily access all three loading spaces. Um, also, as we noted, you can promote, permit deviations from section five oh seven um where um uh in terms of the number of off-street loading and unloading spaces. Um, and, and so that's something if you have, or they can get a, they can get a variance for the specific use. Um, in terms of landscaping, um, the building and the parking lot are not proposed for expansion, um, nor is the qu- area in question being converted to a more intense use. Therefore, per, per section six oh three, they don't need to be brought into full compliance with landscape standards in, in Article Six. However, one of the things that's been discussed is the somewhat residential character of the street itself because it's across the street is, it is a neighborhood. And you also have a single-family house um right next door across Edison. So across Second and across Edison, you have residential uses. And how did, can this street be converted in order to accommodate walkability and whatnot? Um, so um, one of the things to, for you to give the applicant input about is, is there landscaping? Is there improvements on Second that would come into that also? But if you look at the site plan, there's not a lot of room there. There's not a lot of play. And that's one of the reasons um that we suggested that maybe something to think about is that instead of the five trees that would be required, is that they would give some sort of, they would, they would um as you have required in Village Commercial or other places, um, give a donation to the tree fund um in lieu of those five trees, and that way that money could be used to improve walkability either here or elsewhere in the city. Um, and again, especially if you can require, you can require conditions that would directly relate to making the special land use compatible with the standards. And one is, one of the standards is the adjacent nature of the, of, of the community and also of, of the area and of, of the master plan. Um, we've noted on floor plans that we need some more information, and the information tonight, presented tonight was much clearer, but we would need to review that in a, in another review. Um, on pages eight through ten, um, you'll see that we have looked at the special land use standards, and I'm only gonna bring a couple of them to your um attention tonight. One of the standards is that the proposed use generally meets the intent of the zoning district. Um, and so if you look at the zoning district intent, the, the use is generate a minimum of noise, glare, odor, vibration, water pollutants, fire, explosive radioactive hazards and other harmful and obnoxious matter. The district and the city has been located for the development of these industrial uses to protect adjacent residential and commercial areas against the encroachment of incompatible uses and to lessen congestion on public streets and highways. To these ends, the certain uses would function more effectively in other districts and would interfere with the operation of industrial activities. The purpose of this district has been excluded. So that's the intent of the district, and you need to keep that in mind. Also, the special, what, another one is that the special land use will be designed, constructed and operated and maintained to be compatible with and not significantly offer, alter the existing or intended to character of the general facility in consideration of environmental impacts, views, aesthetics, noise, vibration, glare, air quality, traffic, property values, similar impacts. So if you have opinions on what, anything beyond what the applicant has provided tonight in terms of mitigating those, then that should be there. And then in a minimum, we recommend that the planning commission place limitations on the hours of operation to limit the impacts on the adjacent residential areas. Um, also, um, one of the standards is the proposed use shall be of a nature that make vehicular pedestrian traffic no more hazardous than is normal for the district involved, uh taking into at least five different points. Um, under the current conditions, that standard can be met, but again, we're always thinking about the future. And because this is a unimproved right-of-way, what's gonna go on there in the future? This is a moment to protect that. Um, so again, that agreement that would come in with the city that come becomes very important, and we would urge would be at, if, if this was debated to be recommended for approval, that that be part of a condition of anything that goes to city council. Um, and then also that that have contingencies for changes and review to site circulation and safety. Just so both the applicant and the city are protected in the future with any changes. Um, finally, one of the standards is the proposed use shall be designed, located and planned and operated to protect public health, safety and welfare. Um, as proposed, deviations and variances and more enlargements- As proposed deviations and variances and enlargements of nonconformities are needed. However, the reuse of an existing underutilized building can factor into these decisions about exceptions. On the other hand, if the Edison Street right of way may not always be in unimproved areas, especially if the Jason Park is improved. Um, better access for vehicles and pedestrians or cyclists is needed. And so you really got a balancing act to look at as a planning commission. In terms of what's the worth of the adaptive reuse? Um, what's the impact of the surrounding areas and what design things can come or conditions can come into play? Um, in order i- if you feel like that there's a place to be met in the middle. Under, as you went to the text amendments, um, you've noted that one of the things that the planning commission is being looked at is the planning commission could place limitations and hours of operations. Um, and we would feel that that is important. Um, so what tonight, we really ask you to make determinations of the following things and provide some. Provide some input. Um, number one, do you feel additional landscaping is needed on Second Street? Number two, um, is limitations on hours of operations e- needed? And finally, um, are there conditions needed in case of improvements to the Edison Street right of way? Um, I think. And there and turn it over to the engineers of and we're happy to answer any questions after um, as part of staff review.
Thank you. Thank you, Megan. I believe I still there's Marcus just popped up.
Marcus factamere with OHM, we're the uh, engineers for the city. I have very little to add. Um, pretty much everything's been covered that was in our report. Um, is it's an existing site. It has um, utility service. Currently has current uh, vehicle access. We did note the. Challenges with the ramp. That have been discussed that will need to be addressed to the city satisfaction. Uh, the other three items that are in our, uh, were in our report. Uh, really were housekeeping items, clarifications. Amount of additional hard surface paving. Uh, will be required in the area of the handicap accessible space. In order to fully meet ADA. Requirements. And then the other two items were uh, providing the. For the stormwater on off, which. I think is. The applicant uh, had indicated that there's going to be a reduction. We just need to see that calculation on the plans. And then a clarification on the square footage per use on the floor plan. I had right here for question.
Great, thank you. We we may have some additional questions for you in a minute. Um, okay, so I think that covers our consultant reports. Now we have our public hearing part of it, so.
Do you want me? Matt, do you want me to speak now or do you want me to speak after the?
I'm sorry, I didn't know you were gonna do. Why don't you go first and then we'll go to the public. Sorry, thanks.
Um, so you've got my review, which. Excuse me, uh, summarizes the comments that. And recommendations, I should say, that Megan um, from Carla Wartman, OHM and DAFD provided. You also know that the city attorney is working on a an encroaching agreement as that was his recommendation as well. I'm not going to review my comments verbatim because many of them Kate has provided verbal. Um, clarification and that's good for now. Um, obviously, we will need the revised plans. With the details that we that are required and have been requested in order to provide you with a full evaluation. Of the proposal. But like Megan said, please concentrate today on the things that you have to make determinations on. Um, so that the the applicant has uh, the direction that that he needs. And his consultant has the direction that they need. Do you have any questions for staff?
Right now, maybe. Oh, Jim already has a question? Yes.
Michelle, I don't know exactly if this is a staff question or not. But it seems like you'd be the most likely one to be able to answer it. If they had wanted to make a major change here. Move that ramp around to the back of the property, the pro- side facing the railroad. Could they do that and not have to worry about the encroachment?
It's a possibility is the best I could tell you right now.
Okay, thank you. That's my only question.
Yeah, we may have more additional questions. We'll still get plenty of time to ask Michelle questions um, as well, but no, thanks Jim. Um, okay, o- other planning commission items right now. I don't see any other hands. Oh, yes, Mr. Hill.
Um, I've got a seriously long list of comments and questions. And I don't. Know if this is the opportune time to to bring them up.
Well, we we could go right after. Public here, we still need to need to have commit our public hearing.
Okay.
So and then we'll have our planning commission discussion. So that might be a better time and we'll always be able to bring back plant staff and consultants for additional questions.
Yep, okay.
Is that okay? Okay, yeah. And then so let's get the public hearing and we'll get our motion and we can have our discussion because we probably all have some questions. So. Um, with that, we will open the public hearing. Um, so for anybody who'd like to speak to, again, this is regarding that special land use item for the self-storage. Um, has seven seventy-eight fifty Second Street. So at this time, we will open the public uh, hearing. It is a forty-six. So um. With that, anybody like I think I saw a hand up. Was it Mr. McCargill? Oh, yeah, you're yeah, I will hand ones end of the background there. Yes, okay. So Mr. McCargill first, please.
Thanks. Uh, first off, no surprises in the presentations. I've gone through the packet in detail. So. Including the stuff from Midwest Consulting. Um, my pictures were not intended to be details of what this project would look like. And Ted, they were intended to be evidence of what the applicants respect for the neighbors. Might be like, and I wasn't sure which one in Whitmore Lake, so I specifically qualified that. Thank you for clarifying that. Um, I want to talk of just a little bit about uh, what this corridor looked like. Before the tornado. Tornado came right up Second Street. My wife and I saw it coming. We made it to our basement barely. That entire stretch of road looks a lot different than it used to. So please, Jim, when you make a comment about this not being, I think it was Jim, that this not being a residential neighborhood. Uh, I, you know, if I were to share the screen right now of the zoning map. As people have talked about verbally. The only way this is not a residential neighborhood is if you put your back to the building in a couple of different orientations. Uh, second thing, and I think this is really important. Kate, with respect for your job and you working for the client. Though I would suggest, I would offer to you that in the future, the very first thing you do. Is you recommend that to your applicant. That they talk to the neighbors. I didn't hear any mention in anything you said about talking to the neighbors before or talking to the neighbors now. We're the ones who have to live with this, not you. We do. So what's important here is trying to work something out that makes sense for the area, makes sense for the city. And makes sense for the people who have to live with it, like me and my wife who've been here twenty-eight years. Lots and lots of references to what things used to be like with trailers. And cars and so forth. No, 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 no. That's not the baseline anymore. We are not talking about relative to a transition from a dare. A dare is gone. It's not coming back. We're not talking about a comparison to semi-trailers now at the docks. They're gone. We should be thinking about whether. This is conforming as much as we possibly can going forward. Not, is it a change from what a dare was or what could be allowed in that spot? I don't want to dive into the details of the three things that you talked about. For consideration tonight, encroachments, verbal clarifications and so forth on. The landscaping hours of operation in the Edison Street right away. I'm going to leave that. For a future one. I really, really want the planning commission to step back and look at this. That zoning is a dinosaur. The small, everybody keeps saying this is a really special situation. It's a special situation in a tiny representation of this owning classification within the old village. If you are not going to take a stand now and figure out, what do we really want to have happen down the way? What is going to change you to make it into something different? What will cause you to say, you know what? If we allow this and we allow that ramp. Uh, somebody who's standing at the end of that ramp is going to be shaking hands with somebody on the right of way on Edison Street. Going back to that comment by Kate about the ninety-nine foot right of ways and all we got to do is turn them into sixty-sixes. Kate, this entire village is platted with ninety-nine foot right of ways. Hudson Street in front of my house has ninety-nine foot right of ways. Everything's measured. Forty-five feet from the dead center of a properly aligned street. So these just well, will magically make it go away by saying sixty-six foot right of ways. Well, that means you're going to go through the whole village and you're going to change it in the whole village. Because by golly, I'm looking out my window right now at Second Street and Hudson. And it's ninety-nine foot right of ways in front of my house on Hudson Street. So you want to change it there and make everything magically go away. You're going to make it magically go away through the rest of the village. Uh-uh, doesn't work, doesn't fly. That 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 just does not make sense. You have a dinosaur on this property. And you're trying to make.
I sorry, well, after we are at the five minute mark, sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
It's okay. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We just have to try to keep to a schedule. We've got.
I understand that and I'm passionate. Did you tell?
Thank you, sir. Uh, next up, Mr. North.
Well, thank you again, Mr. Kowalski. Appreciate it. Um, I just wanted to add a couple of comments. I was struck by Mr. Kissinger's comment about. The self-storage classification not being in the current code. Um, maybe because it was on purpose. Um, and I think that's important for people to keep in mind. Um, the other thing that I wanted to mention and um, you know, first of all, uh, Derek and Kate, great. Set of information and presentation um, that was really good. And Derek, I respect what you're doing uh, with your other businesses and and that's um, and that's cool. Um, one of the things I wanted to point out was in the business, in the storage units that my bank finances. It's not uncommon that other businesses are operating out of the storage units. Um, and I'm not sure how the. The zoning and the city rules would treat that um, because they store their tools, their materials, their inventory. Um, and when you combine that with the proposed twenty-four seven access that actually. Uh, makes me even um, you know, less excited about it and I wasn't excited to start. Um, uh, about the the use for this building. Um, the other thing was it had been talked about, well, uh, another consultants and others, this could be a. You know, gosh forbid, a big industrial use comes in. Um, I would point out there's information in the market and the market says that for the last ten years, living through two expansions. Um, this building has not been picked up by a factory or an industrial use. And it likely never will be. It was constructed before we had the uh, industrial uh, park and other things. Uh, the businesses I work with would never come in and create a factory out of this facility. It's too cramped. It's too old. Heck, if it's been vacant or little used for ten years, one of the questions I have for the city is is how close is it to being condemned? I mean, what is the extent of the repairs that need to be made in it? Um, and uh, so anyway, I was thinking it's a false choice to say, well, if we don't do this, we might get something else. I'll bet a Dexter Bakery Donut, you'll never have a uh, a factory in there again. Um, and those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Kowalski.
Hey, thank you, sir. Additional, oh yeah, I see another hand right up, uh, Mrs. Kissinger.
Hi, thank you. Um, I also appreciate the um, the additional information that was shared. Um, something that really struck me was Megan's comments about. We're at an opportunity to potentially improve. Um, I think she talked about a point in time. Um, and I think that's, it is a real opportunity to think about what Dexter wants this area to look like. Um, I have now increased concerns about truck traffic. Um, say someone's moving, they've got a a moving van. It might unload into the storage facility and now we've got semis going down Second Street. Um, I'm also more concerned about access to the park and while it seems adequate now. Will that change over time? And if the city wants to make more green space. Have we set up a situation where that's hard to do? Um, and also uh, increased traffic will limit. Um, safe access to border to border trail. As a new property owner, that was one of the big advantages to the property location that I saw. And to be honest, if I knew a self-storage facility was going to this spot, I would have hesitated to buy my property. Thanks for your time.
There's no public comment. I don't see any other hands up. Virtually or otherwise. As I'm missing something.
If there's anybody on the phone, star nine. I don't think we have any phone.
We'll close the public hearing at uh, eight fifty-five. Okay, so now this is a time, as as mentioned earlier, we are uh, being requested to postpone these items just for the. Because of that snafu and the public noticing. Um, so at this time, again, we would look for that motion and and I know. We do have several items that the petitioner would like to probably hear feedback on as well as some things we need to give our consultants direction on. So with that, I see Mr. Cardy's hand already up.
I will move to postpone the public hearing until our May meeting.
Okay.
Then I'll have a few comments if we get a second.
Yep, we will. Okay, so moved Cardy. Support wise, okay. Um, all right, so. With that, we have uh, commission discussion.
All right.
Mr. Cardy first.
So. I'd like to start out by saying, you know, we have recently had a nice history in the city. Of. Old and and arguably eyesore buildings um, being developed. Into much nicer projects. And the two that come to mind are the Chevrolet dealership. And Katie's bowling alley. Um. Both of which were in. Different ways dated, dilapidated, sort of concrete blockish looking buildings. Um. That were taken from that status to. Um. You know, some of the nicer buildings in the town. Um. And what to me is really disappointing about this project. Is that it looks to me like you are. Putting a lot of money into the interior revenue producing part of the building. And doing. Almost nothing. I I would say to me, it looks like nothing. Um. To address the fact that. It is a dated, arguably eyesore building in our town. Um. The reason I asked Michelle the question is because I think that. Arguably, you could use the back of the building to put your ramp there. Um. Clearly, you could do some sort of um, upgrade to the appearance of the building. Um. Right now, I am a no. I am definitely a no. Um. And and I'm a no for. A variety of reasons. I I add the reason I just said. You're really doing nothing to improve the site while asking us to approve a use that right now is a nonconforming use. Um. I feel like you are not approaching this project and this commission. Um. Frankly, respectably, and with the right cooperative approach. Um, two examples of that, Kate respectfully, big mistake coming in and assuming the right of way will shrink. Um, I've been on the commission a long time. And and I don't think I've ever seen a planner come in front of us and sort of nonchalantly offhand. Dismiss. A concern over a right of way like that. It was really disappointing. Um, the ramp, the ramp is another example. I I don't care if the ramp is part of the structure or not. The ramp. Increases nonconformity. There's no debate about that. When we have these projects with non. When we have these projects with nonconforming conditions, what we're trying to do is move away and improve the situation. You're taking a nonconforming condition and making it worse. I I don't get the feeling that you've taken our concerns seriously enough. I don't get the feeling that you have respectfully and thoughtfully engaged with the challenges of this site. I don't get the feeling that you're willing to put money into the project to improve the site and deal with the nonconformities. If you were, you'd be giving us some improvements to the exterior and you'd be moving that ramp around to the back. And frankly, you'd be recognizing that this is not the proper site for twenty-four hour access. I I might be a no, you know, just on twenty-four hour access. I mean, that is so clearly not appropriate for this site. So I always like to, when we have these opportunities, give really blunt and really plain feedback so that you know exactly where you stand with me. And that's where you stand. And, you know, it's it's with me and and I will try to convince my fellow commissioners to see the see it the way I do because that's what I believe is my role. With me, you've got a high hill to climb and it would take a significantly different approach to this project to get my vote. So I appreciate what you're trying to do. I appreciate you coming in front of us. But to to this point, it's pretty disappointing. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Additional planning commissioners, please. Yes, should I help, please?
I totally agree with Jim in regards to maybe a number of points, but one in particular. And that is, this is an ugly building. And it always has been. And there is nothing being done to to make it better in that regard. We're talking landscaping, we're talking doing something to the facade. I don't know about moving the ramps, but that's a good idea, but certainly the trash receptacle is that storage area ought to be moved to the back. There's just a number of things like that. And and Jim said he was disappointed. Man, I'm totally disappointed that that the petitioner hasn't suggested with some elevation view of views other than painting the one side of the building. I think that's on there, but come on. That 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 doesn't measure up in my regard. I do have a few questions, though, beyond that. One of those is what's happening to the west side? You know, it's on the alley. People can come and there's some doors there. So are they open to the public to access the building from the west side also? And if so, there's there's no way for parking or anything else to to happen at that at that location. I'm assuming that those doors are not general access. But I but I am curious to know. It hasn't been addressed. I think personally, and this is easy fix for you that they handicap the barrier-free parking spaces in the wrong location. I suggest that Maggie's probably had needs that particular a space like that at their location since they're there as a business. And therefore, a more appropriate location is down there. I would suggest, I don't know about the the right of way issue, but if you do, if it is a negotiated change so that you are able to utilize right of way space for parking, I would suggest that it goes beyond that, that it's not only parking, but it's the landscaping. It's it's making that side of the building much better. It's been pointed out that the Edison Street itself doesn't align well. And and at some point in time, that park will need to have a proper drive down there that does align with the street that allows a little bit more room. So there's perhaps room for a little bit negotiate, a little bit of negotiation with the city in that regard. I would suggest that the petitioner here volunteer throw in site improvements of that nature on that side of the building. That if we're allowed to to have our our business in this in this building or if we sell storage is what I'm saying, then we will pay for site improvements on the Edison Street side that are appropriate for the type of use and the entrance. I myself, the if it's lighting's an issue or yeah, if lighting's not going to be any more than it was or any more intense things, you know, there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, that's fine. The that's what's been stated. The landscaping, additional landscaping, that's peanuts in a development project. So going, showing that, going beyond the minimal is going to buy a certain amount of support or more support, I'm sure. I think that's the other, the other comments have already been raised. Oh, by the way, one comment that Mr. Northrop made, which is a good point, but I don't think it applies here. And that is that some people use storage facilities to run their business out of those those types of self-storage facilities that you see everywhere, which has been mentioned, the basically garages that are stacked onto each other and you have room outside the building, I mean, outside your unit to do that sort of stuff. That's where that occurs. This would be, this site would be tremendously difficult, I think, for that to actually happen. I also know this. And we've rented some storage facilities in the past, too. If I'm going to my storage facility, I want to be right next to it. So I'm, I know you're going to get people like me who are going to be parking everywhere there's an access point to bring in their stuff and take it out. They're not going to be simply going down there to the back of the building and then have to cart all their stuff to the front of the building. It's just not going to happen. That's not the way people are. It's not the way I am. So anyway, I think that pretty much covers my comments for now, anyway.
You can always add more later if it comes out. Dustin, I know you had your hand up as well. Now you're, there you go. No, now you're back unmuted. You were unmuted. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, so as I stated, the text of text amendment, I'm okay with, but the special land use needs serious work. I'm with Chet for sure about the ugly building. I was surprised that there was nothing proposed for the outside of the building. The hours are important. There's no way that I would ever allow twenty-four seven access to the building. Eight to five, nine to six, that would be something that I would consider, but no way twenty-four seven. The right of way absolutely has to be approved through council and the city attorney before anything can really be done. Ramp not being connected, that argument was, as Mr. McCarty said, was rather disappointing to hear. I think my other concern I had was when they are talking about the back, the backside of the building with all the equipment that's back there right now. When they are talking about refencing it and stuff like that, I I'm like, well, why wouldn't you do, why would you do that? You could technically potentially put the ramp back in the back area there. So I was surprised that there where the proposed ramp was going to be. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, additional planning commissioner questions, comments, we still hear from others. So again, I think we're giving up and I see Kyle. Yes, why don't we go, Kyle? You can have your comments. I'm going to review my pack and make sure we're covering everything. So Kyle, please go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Thank you, yeah.
All right, thanks, guys. Yes, so interesting to hear all of this discussion tonight. I was, I would say I originally was tepidly for this. You know, this is a vacant building in town. It's been that way for some time. And I do like that, you know, the applicant is is trying to bring some business to town. So and it looks like they've done, you know, some good work thinking through this. So I definitely appreciate all of that. But I think after listening to some of the neighbors, some of our neighbors here, I think they they bring up some real concerns. And I think we've been you know, the that the way that they're talking about it is, okay, well, is this little thing right? Is this is this other little thing right? You know, we have to resolve this little issue. But we should remember this is a special land use and one of our, one of our determining factors is, is it appropriate? Does it fit? This is it compatible, I think is the the term. And you know, after listening to the people who actually live next door to this, I think no. I'm leaning that way anyway. There is an issue with this site. There's no denying that. But the question I I think that I've heard put by some of the residents and I it resonated strongly with me is that is this just what we're going to do and do this special land use just to get something in? Or I think it gets down to your vision of of what town is. And if you, if you think that we can make this a great town and and continue to invest and and put the kind of thought that I think in the passion that I think we were putting into it. I I think that I don't know. I think that this isn't it. At least from a you know, that there's an issue with the site. It's true. But you know, that to change everything just to allow this to you know, gets back to that compatibility thing. And I and I think that that's a question that I don't know. So that that's that's leaning me towards the no side, I would say.
Thank you, Kyle. It's Karen Roberts.
You're muted. Oh, you got it.
I just, I was just scanning the map of Dexter, the satellite map of Dexter. And it would make it the biggest building in this sort of, other than till you get out till Bishop Circle and around there. And it is, to to echo Chet, ugly. It's really, it's in bad shape. It it, you know, I I think we'd have trouble approving a you know, a shed in somebody's backyard that looked as bad as that. And one of the other competing interests in the master plan is the, you know, demand and wish for more green space. And access to to Horseshoe Park is going to have to be that way and to really make it accessible. And that, you know, that we heard Park and Rex saying on whenever we met for the joint meeting that that part of what they're trying to do is is expand the understanding of what's available in the city. And I never go down there and I only live a block away because you know, it doesn't look very very inviting. So I I really think, you know, the the neighbors plea for us to take it slow is the right thing to listen to. We're, you know, I'm going, we're going through those of us on the rewrite committee are have to be experiencing. I know I am cognitive dissonance. We're talking about form-based and formation of of kind of public spaces and how they're defined by what's on, you know, buildings, the the edges of them, if you will, the edges of the public spaces. And this is, I think, a really unfortunate definition for Second Street. And I really, I I do not think this is the right project or the right place. It takes up too much room. It's just, it's just, I want to keep saying it's just as it is now, as it is now, as it is now, it's really an unfortunate structure right now, I think, for Dexter. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Additional additional planner, planning commission feedback. Reviewing through the list, so we've given them a lot. I know there are some items specifically in it that we need to get it addressed to. I think we, although we've heard some feedback, I know Megan, Michelle, that regarding the additional landscaping, it looks like we have some.
This, the staff report requested motions on those three determinations. They're on fourteen and fifteen.
Yeah, on the bottom, while I'm looking at, I got on the bottom of page ten or so. And Megan's, oh, that's Megan's report, actually. So additional landscaping on Second Street. I mean, we haven't had any specific comments on that. So like, well, there we go. I see a, I see Dustin has raised his hand on that. So or or if it's regarding the hours of operation, those were, I know we heard some on the hours of operation a lot that were not supportive at all of the twenty-four hours. So we do, you can get some feedback on that. Dustin, do you have some additional feedback?
Yeah, I totally forgot. I did have written down here the the landscaping, which is what Megan talked about with the potentially a donation to the tree fund.
Yes, that was one of the options.
Yeah, I I would be for for that.
I mean, and I would, I I would agree. I mean, I think it probably goes to some of the point about additional improvements to the property that many planning commissioners have have mentioned. So I don't know necessarily whether we need to be specific on that. But yes, Jim, Cardy?
Yeah, I'll just say on those two points, landscaping is not the, there are so many bigger issues than landscaping here that I almost don't think it really rises to my concern. A- as far as hours, the most I could see us approve or myself approving would be something like seven to seven or eight to eight. That would, that would be the most.
Additional feedback on hours. Again, we heard a lot of negative about the twenty-four hours. So, you know, with with that, I a lot of my comments were kind of already mentioned and given the hour, I don't want to repeat them. So I'll try not to, but forgive me. Really, my, from me, really, my biggest concern, again, as mentioned, but kind of the this, this is a special land use. I mean, I'm glad I think Kyle brought that up. So that in itself requires something special. And I get, I've struggled with this a lot because I I, I mean, in the use, I don't necessarily have as much of an issue with the use that's proposed. I think what, however, given the special land use and given the location, and I think what what's what's really troubling me is I'm stuck on is is kind of that the the right of way. I mean, that's really the issue that runs to the top. And I know that it's been used that way for fifty, sixty years. But one thing I'm struggling in, we want to allow this building to be reused. I know if we stick a nail in somewhere, we can't do anything and it's not, you know, it may sit there or we may get what we want eventually as as the property turns over. But I think for right now, the the issue I'm struggling with is is approving, it looks like would be a special land use with a combined site plan that locks in all of that right of way on that side of, and yeah, to to pavement and into parking, that's to private parking. I I'm struggling with that and I know it's been used that way and it may never be improved. But we did just have our commission meetings and we look at the master plan where we are trying to activate that Second Street Park. And 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 I I and I know we need agreements, like again, I'm very curious to see what our attorneys would come up with. Because again, I'm concerned, we we approve a site plan, we lock this parking in there. And whether or not you you operate, if this, if it's approved, you operate for two, three years, you go away. We now have parking there. And if the city ever wants to improve that, then you're never going to put a sidewalk across all those parking spaces. So I I'm really struggling with how to maybe let that go to allow a reuse to, again, all the other issues aside, but say we get the other issues addressed. But let's focus on how we get that addressed so that protects the cities and our right to be able to reuse that right of way with some added green space and get in there with, I know there's nowhere to, well, there's the park to walk to at the end of that. But again, that may be improved. There's a house next to it on the other side. So who knows how that condition may change? So that is something that I I need some solid answers for and how that goes forward. And the idea about moving to the back, the the loading dock, I know that creates a whole nother set of issues with, because there's right of way back there. However, However, again, it it, we're struggling with what we've got here is a special land use. And we are, I think, of a non-conforming building. And I get we want to adaptive reuse, but we're we're locking in with increasing the non-conformity, I think. Again, that's kind of where I'm struggling, is we're like, we're almost helping this non-conformity. We're, we're making it worse by allowing all this, I think, in the right-of-way and and the loading dock and things. So I I've just, I've been struggling with it because I want, I I like the investment and I also go back to our master plan, right? Is this necessarily what we sought? Well, no, but we don't have the ability to necessarily pick and choose. We have somebody who wants to invest in our, in our community. But the special land use is really kind of the that kicker here is because it's not just a buy right land use, it is kind of a special land use. Well, not kind of, it is. So, um, so those are, again, there's a bunch of other issues that were kind of already mentioned, but that's, I tried to keep it to my biggest concern, which is that the the use of that right-of-way and how to improve that somewhat, protect the city, but allow us to agree something more that meets our master plan while maybe gets what you wait, the use that you could desire, but something more that helps address those concerns. So additional planner, planning commission feedback on that, I think we gave a lot. I think we answered most of your questions, Megan, Michelle, that for what you need the additional feedback on. And I know there's some other issues that were outstanding. There was another question, um, if I can find it. I can't find my notes. Okay, well, I think that's it for me. Are there additional planning commission? Otherwise, we can, there was a motion to postpone as requested. So with that, we we could take a roll call on the the main motion. If I don't see any other planning commissioner, hands up. Am I missing any? Nobody's waving at me? Okay, Megan, Michelle, you need anything else? Okay, so with that, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Healy.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Wise.
Yes.
Cardy.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes. Okay, so the item will be postponed until the May meeting. Okay, thank you, everybody. Moving right along onto our next public hearing. All right, our our final public hearing, again, we are requesting a postponement on this as well. This would be for the capital improvements plan for the fiscal years twenty, twenty-one through, it's a twenty, twenty-six. So with that staff, do we want to give a relatively brief, well, I guess I shouldn't, I shouldn't say that. Even given the hour, please lend us all the information that you need to give us.
All right, well, it it will be brief. As you all know, the capital improvements plan is a program that projects and coordinates the city's expenditures to improve capital assets for transportation, utility systems, city facilities, and the like. The planning commission reviewed draft updates at the March regular meeting. And since that time, some updates have been incorporated into the draft. A complete draft of the CIP as well as a motion or a resolution of adoptions included in your packet. As for the updates that have been made to the plan itself since the March meeting, the trail, the proposed trail and community park was removed from project two points zero one, community park improvements as moved by the commission. The, from what I understand, the Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec Commission maintains their initial recommendation that it be included. And as you know, council could choose to reintroduce that that component of the trail into the project when they review the final, the plan for adoption. At the last meeting, there are several commissioners expressed concerned about, concerns about the the trail extension disrupting the playfield. So just for reference, there is a photo of the park and elevations and measurements just showing the rough dimensions of the play area and route of the trail included. Since the the trail shown in the previous project map was sort of a even more imprecise curvature. So at the very least, for reference, that that information's there. Should you choose to reintroduce the trail? In addition to that, updates were made to the projects four point zero one, four point zero five, City Hall and Fire Department Facility to reference the city's entry to a purchase agreement for thirty-five fifteen broad as well as publishing a notice of intent to bond to finance potential purchase and building renovation. Similarly, the fire department or the fire facility project's been updated to include the acquisition of the Dexter and Arbor property. And lastly, the Grand View Commons Connector location map has been updated. So, um, unless anyone has the questions, the plan is available, well, or staff's requesting approval of the plan for adoption.
Right, thank you. Well, let's go over to, we'll have some, our public hearing, and then we can go back if we have staff comment or if we have questions for you right after. Okay, so with that, we will open the public hearing at nine, say nine twenty-five. So if anybody would like to address the capital improvements plan, if you'd like to speak to the planning commission, please raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, hit star nine and say your name and address. Public hearing is now open.
See, Mr. McCarter has a hand up.
Oh, had I missed? Oh, just must just went up. Okay, well, so we have, we have one taker. Okay, Mr. McCarter, please?
Yeah, surprise, surprise. I I and I waited a couple of seconds to leave.
For the record, we need your name and address.
James McCarter, thirty-five eighty Hudson Street, Dexter, meh, twenty-eight-year resident, retired teacher, et cetera. I looked at the capital improvements plan, and one thing I noticed in there was the project for the improvement of something that's near and dear to items one and two, which is First Street Park, the Horseshoe Park, which I I can look down the street now, it's dark, but sometimes I can hear it. What's in here, clang? Anyway, you've got that in your capital improvements plan. You guys have five rating factors. And two of them are really, really difficult to get to apply to something like that park because they have to do with citizenry, improving citizen safe, safety. And it's something related to environmental improvement. Now, you might be able to stretch to get that second one. But the other three, that project is rated top dog on all three of them. And they have to do with things like we've been talking about in connection with what's the future vision? Improving citizen opportunities for recreation, improving aesthetics. Like, when you're approaching the park, what does it look like? Okay, you guys have talked about this, you folks have talked about this several times tonight. This is not always necessarily going to be what it is right now. And goodness knows, it's not gonna be what it has been forever. The reason for that is the current zoning situation for that property was set by and for a dare straight through the master planning process. And now they're gone. So think about what you've got in the capital improvements plan and try to reconcile that with what we've been talking about up to now. Imagine that park as a much better park. And how are you gonna get at it? Right now, there are three possible ways. You come at it from Cottonwood, and one of our earlier residents does that. Stephanie Minraff. You get at it from Edison. We all know what that looks like. And like you said, improvements to the outside, nah. Or you get at it through the easement in the back of the building. There's problems with putting the brack, the ramp on the back of the building or moving the garage stuff and putting a roof over it in the back, because that's out of conformity too. That's a non-conforming setback. It's not as bad as the other ones, but it's still there. But that's the third access, which could possibly at some point along the line connect up for people who want to cross around and go on the B two B trail or go the other direction and go to Mill Creek Park. So I encourage every single one of you to go down there and look at that park and think to yourself, capital improvements budget, three criteria, three rating criteria, all at the top. It have to do with the kind of things we're talking about here tonight in connection with this other property. And I've heard one of you say, whoa, we got somebody who's thinking about investing in Dexter. Okay, really? I'm not sure I agree that that's the case. Investing how? I'll leave it at that. I'm probably over five.
That's good, good timing. Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anybody else I'd like to speak to the capital improvements plan this time? Oh, that's the, that's my car's hand. No one else, we will close a public hearing at nine thirty. Okay, so at this time, we are open for planning commission discussion. Again, we're requesting a postponement of this until the May meeting. So with that, do we have a planning commission motion?
Move to postpone until the maybe.
Cardy's on fire. Then I saw Roberts, so we'll say Cardy, Roberts, who I support? Okay, second, yep, I saw it. Okay, okay, move Cardy, support Roberts to move to the, the public hearing will be held at the May meeting. Any feedback questions for staff? I get that, it was just Mike's awesome presentation, I guess, or given the hour, I don't know, but, okay. So, um, with that, I guess, can we have a roll call to, oh, wait, I'm sorry, did I miss anybody? Nope. Oh, looks good. Okay, with that, Carol, can we have a roll call vote to postpone, please?
Yes, we can. Marsh.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Phillips, whoops, excuse me, he's absent. Wise.
Yes.
Cardy.
Yes.
Healy.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes. Okay, thank you. We'll see you, or we'll see the CIP at the next month again. All right, pre-arranged citizen participation, we have none scheduled for tonight. Now we come to non-arranged participation. This is a chance for anybody who, from member of the public could speak on basically to the planning commission on anything. If you would like to, please state your name and address, let me hear comments to five minutes and raise your hand. Either star nine or virtually raise it on the screen. Any other public, oh, yeah, we have, we have a hand. Okay, um, looks like Sprague, please? Yes, you may go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, it's Lori, thirty-five thirty Hudson Street. Well, I made it through this whole meeting, and I have to say, I'm I'm just really impressed, and and I thank you all for the work that you're doing. It's, uh, it's been very interesting.
Great, well, thank you. Thank you. It's great to have public participation. So thank you guys for for tuning in. Okay, anything else? Seeing nobody else at this time, we will move from non-arranged participation to reports of officers. Chairman report, I really have nothing to report tonight. So planning commissioners, is this time, if anybody would like to share anything from planning commission that's on your mind? We'll get to committees in a minute, but anything in general? Anything in our student rep, Aiden, anything to share?
So I participated in the Michigan Association Planning and Zoning Essentials Workshop.
Excellent.
I know, it was, uh, like, I felt a little like I could understand what was going on during these meetings, but it wasn't totally clicking. And through that workshop, like, the capital improvement stuff is, I can comprehend that very well. So I'm looking forward to becoming more vocal in these meetings because now I can comprehend and understand the information. So I took notes that I have reference points as what we're talking about. So, you know, I feel like I gained a lot of knowledge. It was interesting to hear that spot zonings are often ruled invalid after a lawsuit. I didn't know they had a tendency to be sued over a spot zoning.
Yes, we haven't been yet, but at least not to my knowledge, but it's because of our great planner, right? Well, that's, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. Okay, so committee reports, who do we have from our committee reports? I mean, we have our separate zoning update later, so I don't think we have anything else in our selection committee. We're gonna do a member later, so. Nope, okay, so.
Wait a minute, we didn't have.
Development Office, oh, I'm sorry, Chet.
We didn't have a ZBA meeting, that's all I want to say.
Oh, that's good feedback. Thank you. I did jump right over you. So you're sorry you took that position, eh? Thought it was gonna be all this glamour and extra time, right? But now. All right, um, okay, so with that, I see Was hand up for council. Did I skip you?
Yeah, no, I just, uh, my art selection. On the, on the old, under Old Business, it says it's about appointing a rep, but I was just gonna report that we had the meeting and that we chose some sculptures and some alternates, and we sent them to council, and it was approved. Those selections were approved, so as the years passed, hopefully, our first choices are available. Sometimes they're not because they are taken by other cities before we get to them, and that's why we choose the alternates. But we had a really strong field of things to choose from this year, probably one of the best that I've seen in the last five years, so. And there were some other council stuff, but Mike covered it, so I'm not gonna spend any time on that.
Great, thanks, Wa. Any questions for Wa, council business or anything? No, okay. And so now, I guess, Michelle, would you like to, no, we're good on that. Okay, yeah, we're good, save the voice, save. All right, um, so going through communications, we have no communication, so Old Business, it looks like we just have this I F E evaluation, I remember we do those every once in a while, which the question comes up then, like, why are we as a planning commission? But, um, it's, it should be a relatively quick thing. I guess you want to give us a little background on that, or is that Mike?
It'll be me real quick. U I S has applied for an I F T. Part of the evaluation is something that you do based on their site design layout, et cetera. Excuse me, and I'm fumbling with my papers because I can find the plan, but I'm not finding my report that went with it to tell you what to do. So you have, you, I know it's in the packet, I just can't find it. So, um, please follow along. You just need to rate the three, I believe it's three categories.
Everybody have that in their packet what Michelle is referring to. I'm sorry, just because there's some new planning commissioners, I know, that might not have had a, it's a pretty simple kind of evaluation form. It, and actually, I I didn't see it in my printed packet, Michelle, but. So I don't know.
It's on page one ninety-four of the packet.
Actually, it was weird, my page literally was missing a page one ninety-four in my packet.
Oh.
Yeah, I.
Ninety-four, so hang on just a second. Mike, can you share it? Oh, you're, you're, you are wonderful.
Got it.
Thanks, Mike.
So, sorry, you're ranking two points for exemplary, one point for well-designed, and zero points for adequate. So, um, there are one, two, three, four, five criteria. Building architecture and site compatibility, building exterior construction materials, landscaping and screening, exterior lighting and identification, traffic flow, safety and efficiency. So, um, if we could do this as quickly as possible, since the hour is getting late, just let me know what your thoughts are on this.
I mean, it's always been, again, typically in the past, we've usually gone down and did ones, but I don't know that. Again, the planning commissions is a discussion item. I mean, it, we, it, I mean, exemplary, I think, is a high standard. I think when we look at number two for exemplary, that's kind of, although their landscaping maybe for that facility is pretty good.
And that was the one question I had for you. I kind of figured you probably all would go with number ones, but with landscaping, I wasn't sure.
You guys are, you guys are easy graders. I would go for zeros for all except landscaping.
And what would you think of landscaping?
It's absolute. There's no one who would drive through our city and look at that building and just be like, that is well-designed. I mean, come on, why, why, why would we give?
I don't know if it like affects.
It's not well-designed particularly, but the.
It's not well-designed particularly, but the exterior materials look pretty nice. You know, it's not corrugated metal. I mean, it's, you know. I, I was giving them that attitude.
I looked the whole thing, the whole thing is adequate.
Okay, so we've got some zeros, we've got some ones out there. Additional thoughts?
Your taxes.
So, like I said, we're, we're putting out some numbers. I mean, I think the landscaping, right, I would agree, the landscaping for that site is, is, is great. I mean, I think that.
Let's give them that, you know, come on, you can do some pretty nothing stuff out there, and this is pretty good.
Okay, so, all right, so do we give that a one or a two? Two.
Two.
I think it's exemplary for that site, it really is. Now, code made him do that, but still. And I, I am an easier grader. I would tend to give ones because zeros sound bad, but.
Are we voting on this?
You have to make a motion.
And we have, I was gonna say, we have to, right now, we're not, but we have to eventually come to, right, to support, so.
I fi, I'm fine with a two on landscaping. Let's give them zero on everything else.
Second.
One out there?
I'm fine with one on everything, even landscaping.
So let me make this suggestion. Somebody make a motion for what they think, get it seconded, and then you can vote.
We've, we've got one, Kyle supported.
Oh, twos on landscaping.
As a motion, but I will, I will, I will formally word it. I would like to give them a two on landscaping and a zero on everything else.
Okay, so Mr. Cardi.
I'll second.
Oh, sorry, Robert's second. So discussion on that. I would support ones on them, but. Yes, Dustin?
I, I support ones on everything except for the landscaping I would give twos. I think. It looks very nice. And it's not, you know, they didn't skimp through it.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I do struggle with the well-designed, like, when you compare that to other buildings.
Yeah, but, you know.
For what it is, I think, and that's what, I don't think, we're not setting a precedent here, Michelle, correct, right? I mean, by saying, oh, this is well-designed, I want to make sure other planning.
Let me put it, let me put it differently. Does anybody look at this building and think that it's so well-designed that, that they should get a tax break for it? Oh.
No.
Very good wording.
Great to the point. What their, their landscaping is. Okay, so it's a very late hour, we're gonna have to take a, a motion. Uh, we have a motion. But additional feedbacks are, we, yeah, we could just go through it for the vote right now. The motion is two landscaping and zeros for, uh, which means adequate for the rest of it. So, um.
Can I?
Can we amend the motion and say, let's compromise all ones except the two on landscaping? I think there's a almost consensus, and Jim.
Well.
I'm not gonna amend. If we vote it down, then, then we can propose another motion. I'm not gonna amend.
Okay, Chet, I know you had a question.
Yeah. Um, explain what's going on here. I mean, what is this used for?
So, when somebody comes in for an industrial facilities tax exemption. We have a evaluation, um, point system. One of the, one of the areas of this valuation is planning commission's evaluation of the site design, the building materials, landscaping, et cetera. That, whatever these points are, goes into the ultimate decision on how many years the abatement could be. Okay?
That's important.
Yeah, and this is, this is why I won't amend, like, it's a principle thing with me. I don't think that they did anything there sufficient to deserve a tax break.
Right, so, well, let's, let's, sorry, do you have an additional comment or we do have a motion?
As a landscape architect, that's why I'm not as particularly thrilled as everybody else, because I see all those circles. Um, but, um, but if, if everyone feels that that's great, yeah, good. Um, I tend to align myself with Jim in this regard. As I say, I did not understand. Oh, exactly what, what this is all about. In fact, I didn't get this form in my packet either. This is the first I've seen it.
I'm really sorry, it's not in mine either, and I don't know why it didn't print, but you can see that it was in the packet. I'm sorry about that.
The weirdest part, it's in the online packet.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so that's.
My apologies, folks, and I wouldn't, I'd say, go ahead and postpone this, but city council needs, is, um. Is, has to take action on Tuesday or Monday.
Yeah, we can vote on it for sure. We have enough, um, okay, so with that, we have, and I mean, Jim does raise a good point and. Chat's question for clarifying, good, thank you, Chuck, for asking that, because I want to make sure that all the new commissioners understand exactly what, what this is. So, okay, so with that, um, we're gonna take a vote on the motion. Oh, wait, sorry, I see some hands going up, so maybe, well, wait a minute. Dustin and then Wa.
So, I'm gonna go, since, since. That's more information than I understood, and then with Chet commenting about the landscaping not necessary. I, I, I would ask that we amend the landscaping to a one then, and not a two. And then you can keep everything else as a zero if Mr. McCarty's okay with that.
I'm, I'm fine with that if whoever seconded it is fine with it.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Robert, uh, did I have Robert? Yes, Roberts, okay. So that would revise.
Or the amended motion, yeah.
One on landscaping, zeros on the rest, and now Wa, you have your hand up?
I guess, and I don't want to keep us here, but I didn't understand this that well either, and what's the, the threshold? No, I mean, for like, what number do they get, is there like a number that they have to get to? Like, we're giving them a one, like, one total.
So, if you, if they got twos on everything, it adds up to a ten, that's the maximum number they could get in this particular section.
Does that equate to years or?
So, when, not by itself, it doesn't, but it could by adding ten more points. Add, um, it could add a year to their abatement.
So what does one do?
One's not gonna give them anything. It doesn't give them anything.
What's the lowest number that would give them anything?
It, it, it's going, hmm, that's a hard.
Michelle, we can talk about it later. I just, you know, that's clear, I'm fine with it as is, I, you know, I, the consensus is there. I just, I, at some point, like, to better understand it.
I'll make sure that I show you guys what a, what a full worksheet looks like next time, um, next time we meet. So that you've got a better picture of how it all plays together. That's not a problem.
Can city council override us on this?
Not on this part.
One, can they just go, oh, who cares what the planning commission thinks, which is?
No, because it's all added up together.
Okay.
Okay, so. Um, I don't see anything else, everybody else. Okay, so we, the motion revised from Mr. Cardy's support by Rob. It was one for landscaping and then the zeros for the rest of it. So, okay, so can we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Yes, Cardi.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yeah.
Healy.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Wise.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Roberts.
No.
Waltski.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm the teacher you always wanted.
I'm, I'm, back and forth, but, yeah, okay. Um, all right, moving on, old business text amendments to the accessory dwelling units.
Okay, I know that it's late, and this is. This was just a review, you had the framework last month. This is the draft regs. Everything in black is what you saw last month. But where you see red or strike-throughs or underlines, those were the feedback that you had. And so those were the things that changed. Um. If you want to just not have any discussion on this now and have a discussion next month, that's fine. Um, the, the thing that I'm really interested in getting some feedback from you is. I sent out the, um, the guide to ADU. I, um, sent you the link because we put it up as supplement at the last minute. I'm using this as that tool, if you will, as a way to get more information out to the public. So, as you look over the draft regs, look this over too. And let's come back at the meeting in May to talk more about it. You can give me your feedback then. How's that?
Okay, I, I guess, it, it looks great so far, Michelle, then, I mean, I, I read through, you, you did make a lot of the changes that, I think you made all the changes that we came up with last. At least that I remember from last month, so, yeah, that sounds a good, good idea, um.
The only one I did not take out is I didn't take out rental inspections that, Jim, you had mentioned. And that's because short-term rentals have the rental inspection. City council is moving toward implementing rental inspections. And this ADUs were envisioned as being part of that as well.
I don't like it, but I understand it.
Right.
Good, thanks. Additional comments on the ADU? We can still comment, give Michelle some feedback now, absolutely, but as she said, we will. So, yeah, we're not gonna schedule the public hearing for May at this time, well, it'll.
Not unless you all feel that it's ready to go.
I, I mean, it's, is.
I did. I, I thought, I thought it looked really good and ready, and so it would have to be some sort of contradictory information that came out of here. The, you know, the handout you, or, you know, that you just created.
Right, the handout basically.
Yeah, this.
Gives history, it shows the work you all did to get to this point. And it doesn't give the entire ordinance, but it gives, it gives facts, it gives your policy intent. And it explains what the ADUs are, so.
Yeah, so it does summarize it up pretty nicely. So, um, again, we could schedule a public hearing at this time. If somebody wants to go ahead and schedule a public hearing. A lot of the changes we suggested to last meeting were in there, however, again, given the hour, if we want some additional discussion, reflecting back on the handbook that Michelle said. We can always come back and visit it next month and set the public hearing for June. I don't anymore.
I vote for that.
Wait, Allison, what did you?
I said, I vote to wait. I think we should have discussion on it before we schedule the public hearing.
Okay, additional feedback? Well, Karen, sorry, you were gonna say something?
I, I felt the, I feel the opposite, because I think it's in pretty good shape, but I'm, you know, more discussion, I, well, I hesitate to say this. More discussion is better. I mean, the more, you know, looked at, the better, I think.
More planning commissioner feedback. To make it quick, bring back next month, there's scheduled public hearing, it looks like, if I'm not hearing a public, I mean, Karen. Is that I, I could support the public hearing at this time, but I'm also fine with waiting, um, to give us more time, so. Seems, uh, yes, Wa, you have your hand up?
I just want to point out that, you know, we have talked about this quite a bit, and. I heard us say a while back that the reason why we're even discussing this is because there's somebody in our community that needs this to move forward. So the more we delay, I, I mean, I know that's one person, but I just want us to remember that. If this is a necessary delay, let's take it, but I'm not sure that it is.
Sure, okay, so with, with that, again, if somebody wants to make a motion, schedule the public hearing for May third, we can entertain that. If not, um, you may just close this and then move on. I don't see anybody offering a motion.
Question, if this, if we do schedule the public hearing, is it on this specific text here that we're looking at?
Yes, yes. So, because as Michelle planned, I mean, we have basically the whole in cash, she did, made all of our changes from the last meeting. It's, well, except, with the exception of one that was given an explanation, but, um, o, other than that, I don't know that the text will change before the next meeting.
There's still some things that I have concerns with on this, I think, so I, I would propose waiting.
All right, if. With that, if I don't see a motion, then we can just always, then we'll be doubly sure at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay, all right, I'll see anybody chomping at the bit to make a motion, so with that, um, oh, where'd my agenda go? I was zoning on ordinance update from the subcommittee, it's going great, okay, next. Bye, all right, what's, okay, so, we don't want to short-suit your work, because there is a lot of stuff going on with that committee, so. So, yes, please, all right, what do we need to know on that one? We'll be leading the charge.
You want Megan to do this for you people?
Um, we talked about environmental provisions, um, we're prepared to send stuff in stormwater management to engineers to get their comments. Um, tree preservation is gonna, we're gonna change the orientation of that, um, and wrap it into landscaping when we do that later. Um, we talked about zoning districts and what should be form-based. Um, and looked at really the village residential areas, um, in the master plan. For those to have some form-based things in terms of front porches, um, orientation of doors. Um, allowing encroachments in the front yard for porches or stoops. Um, looking at also that village commercial is form-based, um, central business district, Dexter, Ann Arbor, Baker Road. Um, and so, based on our discussion, we're gonna go off and write zoning districts and bring those back. Um, as drafts for the next meeting. So, we'll really get a bulk of work done, um, making the changes that, um, were in that diagnostic review. But also starting to, um, lay out the basic structure of, um, of your new zoning ordinance.
So it's, it's very helpful, the document that you, so for all the commissioners, please look through and we get those, the, the report that's going towards the, or that goes to the committee and things. So that's, that's pretty helpful to look through there, they help give an idea of what you guys are working on, because I know there's a lot, there's a lot. Okay, a short, but, hey, questions, yes, Mr. Hill.
Um, in regards to this environmental provisions. Are you looking for input?
Um, you know what, I think what'd be best is maybe if you email Michelle and I input, um. Do you feel comfortable doing that? And then we can incorporate that in.
Pretty strong concerns.
Yeah, I know, we, we'd love to hear, and it's in no way, shape or form done. Um, I just want to say, in terms of the tree preservation, that's gonna go into landscaping, and so if the bulk of your comments are there. Um, there might be some things that we're just not gonna, uh, um, address, but we'd love to hear them.
Well, okay, yeah, they have to do with the landmark tree replacements and, um, things of that nature.
Yeah, no, please write them up, send the email to Michelle and I, and then I'll incorporate, we'll incorporate that when we, we were gonna take that section and put it in landscaping instead.
Yeah, if you've got some chat, that's excellent, because that was what we were talking about today, and a lot of, you know, a lot of ideas going around, so.
You can contribute those chat, because those are great ideas, and we can share that with the rest of the commission. I'm sure, I, I did have some, a couple of questions about that, but again, we're, we're discussing, you're moving that, I had some same questions. I don't feel the same, but, but I, I thought we'd put that off, that part of it until later, so. Um, that's good.
All right.
Okay, yes, no, thank you. Anybody else that has comments, please send them to Megan and Michelle, Mike.
Or Mike, you can send them to Mike, too.
Back, yeah, everybody. Um, additional feedback, what else do you, can I say anything else from us, Megan? It was just kind of the intro summary. You don't need any direction from us, you just.
Not at this time, but anything where you have comments like that, again, we welcome them, um, and then send them to staff and me. And then we'll also share them with the subcommittee and go forward.
I mean, we'll always, all of us are always gonna get a chance to relook at everything again in a big piece, but, you know, the sooner we can commit these kind of comments, send them to them, the better, so. Great, um, all right, so, item D, uh, planning commission rep to the art selection committee, who's raising your hands? Great, um, all right, so, item D, uh, planning commission rep to the arts selection committee, who's raising your hands?
This is formalizing Wa as your representative.
I, but I thought we said Wa, because she's.
Oh, I thought. She can do it.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Clarified, that's why she was able to be at the last meeting.
And I thought this was like kicking me off. Didn't know what this was.
God, no, no, no. Um, okay, so we've got that addressed then, all right, uh.
Just make a motion and formalize it.
Oh, okay, so, somebody make a motion to, uh, nominate Wa Hubbard to serve.
The representative, our, the planning commission representative for the arts committee.
Okay, move Roberts. Okay, I think, was that Hill I heard first, or Dustin I saw somebody? All right, we'll go, all right.
Who was the second?
Support wise.
Thank you.
Okay, um. All right, so that's formal, that's done. With that, um, now onto new business. We have none, unfortunately.
We only have to vote on that?
Yes.
Propose business for next agenda. I moved on. We need to vote. Okay, we need a roll call vote, you're right.
Yes, shoot you. Okay, ready? Hubbard.
Yes.
Wise.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Cardy.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Healy.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes, okay, now it's official. There you go, Wa, you are now official. Okay, now new business, none. Uh, propose business for next month. Next month, we have, uh, three or four public, and we've got all our public hearings that we for, we pushed back from tonight, so, um. Yeah, that we push from tonight, and then the ADU will be another discussion item at that point, probably scheduled for follow-up or public hearing in June. Um, all right, I think that's it for proposing business for next agenda. So, uh, with that, are there citizens wishing to address the commission? Please, uh, raise your hand.
They're all gone.
Yeah, come on, well, that's great.
We stuck it out.
Okay, seeing nobody raising their hand, um, we'll move on to the last item, which is, uh, adjournment. Does somebody make a motion to adjourn?
Someone.
Roberts?
Second.
Second Hill, okay, with that, it might be our longest meeting in a while, okay? Meeting is adjourned, thank you all.
Hi, everybody.